Okay, Ms. Tanner, can you verify that this meeting is certified?
Yes, Madam Chair, on December 27, 2020, notice was provided to fulfill all criteria VA Code Chapter 37.
Thank you. I call this meeting to order. What I want to do before, well, let's go ahead with roll call, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Basin?
Here.
Campson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here. And before I move, ask for a motion to go into closed session, I do want to explain to those who are tuning in many possibly for the first time, we are going to go into an executive session and then we will come out of it and that's when we'll begin our public portion of the meeting, just so no one's confused when we disappear. So can I get a motion to enter into closed session?
And then you can minimize this for now.
Madam Chair, I move to go into closed session.
Thank you. We got a double second from Dr. Gabriel and Ms. Smith. Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call to question.
Basin?
Read the resolution.
I'm sorry, I had to read, sorry, read the resolution.
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment and assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees, et cetera, of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session will be the regular personnel docket of this day, be consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are briefing by staff and consultation with counsel concerning the matters identified above. Basin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, I'll see you all in closed session.
A resolution certifying executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative vote, recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conformed with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. So I call this meeting to order. I just want to say thank you to all of our administration for, I know you guys have been working hard since our last meeting. At our last meeting, we had voted to start our school year off 100% virtually, keeping the safety and security of our community as a top priority. And so from that meeting, we had asked our administration to prepare a presentation on what that opening will look like. And so I know we have a lot of parents who are really interested in our virtual learning and our Virtual Scholars Academy and getting more information about our special education students and many other questions that we've received on emails. So I appreciate all of the concerns about our schools, the emails that we've received. They've all been wonderful questions and we hope to address those today. I do want to let everyone know that normally when we're in person, we would be having public comment live and in person. But our public comments, so that all of the emails that we've received are posted on the public portion of the Board Docs website. So please go there to, if you're interested in seeing what the public comments have been. And with that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Birdsong and her staff.
Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few words with you this evening. I want to begin by extending my congratulations to our class of 2020 summer school graduates. We celebrated their accomplishments during a virtual ceremony on August 4th, and I'm so proud of the 21 graduates who completed their high school requirements. This group of students had compelling reasons for taking this route to complete their high school requirements. Some students were expediting their graduations by taking required courses ahead of time, and other students had to overcome significant challenges along the way to ensure that they made it to that K-12 finish line known as graduation. Regardless of the reason, we truly salute their efforts and success. I also want to acknowledge several other students today and their outstanding achievements. First, I am delighted to announce our Norfolk School Board Old Dominion University Scholarship winner, Samantha Raffacon, who graduated from Granby High School. This scholarship is awarded annually to MPS students who have demonstrated outstanding academic performance and who are committed to attending Old Dominion University. This is a wonderful partnership between our school division and ODU, which has benefited so many of our graduates over the years. Congratulations to Samantha and we wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Additionally, I am so pleased to share the announcement of our new school board student representative and alternate for the upcoming school year. Congratulations are in order for Georgia Simpson, who has been recommended through an extremely rigorous process to serve as the school board's student representative. Georgia is a proud senior of Maury High School, who is currently enrolled in the Medical and Health Studies Program. Additionally, she participates in a variety of varsity level athletics. She's a member of the Maury Select Chamber Orchestra, and Georgia is an active member of Young Life Norfolk. A community member who recommended Georgia to serve on the school board's student representative or as the school board's student representative noted that she's an individual who demonstrates great character and selflessness as she puts others before herself. Congratulations are also in order for Amelia Burtz, who has been recommended to serve as the school board's alternate student representative. Amelia is a proud senior of Granby High School, who is currently enrolled in the International Baccalaureate Program. Furthermore, she participates in a variety of athletics, is a member of the Norfolk Public Schools Strolling Strings, and Amelia serves as a community volunteer and was recognized for her work with children who have special needs. A community member noted Amelia to be an energetic, kind, and intelligent young woman, who is also patient, creative, and enthusiastic. And when she sees a need, she figures out what she can do to fill it and jumps right in with her sleeves rolled. Serving on the school board will truly be a commitment of Georgia's and Amelia's time and energy, and we deeply appreciate their desire to make Norfolk Public Schools even better. I'm confident that they will both bring a wonderful perspective on the important issues that we will be facing this school year. We are certainly looking forward to working with them. As we look toward our agenda this evening, let me say that it reflects the incredibly hard work of senior leaders and building administrators in preparing for the return of our students, teachers, and staff for the upcoming school year. We know that our parents, guardians, and students have many questions about our virtual learning format as we start the new school year, and I believe this presentation will answer many of those questions. We will hear detailed reports in five areas. Dr. James Poole, Chief Academic Officer, will share details regarding our instructional plan to include how we plan to serve our students of equity and opportunity, professional development for teachers and staff, and information regarding our collaboration with community childcare providers. Dr. Mike Cataldo, Chief Information and Instructional Technology Officer, will share details regarding our instructional platforms, the dissemination of technology for students, training modules for parents, guardians, and students, and highly anticipated information related to the school division's Virtual Scholars Academy, which we also refer to as the VSA. Information regarding technical supports will be provided as well. Our Chief Schools Officer, Dr. Lanell T. Gibson, will be sharing information about the staff survey results, daily student schedules, and preparations for the start of the school year. Mr. Tim Phillips, our Chief Human Resources Officer, will be presenting information on the school division's prevention protocol, response protocol, and the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. And finally, Mr. Rick Fraley, Chief Operations Officer, will be reviewing our operations areas, including facilities management and custodial services, school nutrition, and transportation. As we hear, as you will hear within this presentation, we left no stone unturned as we have meticulously planned for this historic reopening. And looking ahead to this new school year, I think the most important takeaway for families and students is that this is not the same virtual learning experience from the spring during the mandated closure of schools. Although our teacher staff, building administrators, and senior leaders did amazing work in getting our Learning in Place materials created and getting nearly 10,000 mobile devices disseminated, I think what you will hear from this presentation is that this new school year will come with much higher expectations and greater accountability for student learning and engagement. Also this evening, we will have a presentation and discussion on our school crisis plan and the school's safety inspection checklist led by Dr. Gibson, our Chief Schools Officer. Finally, I want to assure our community that while we are navigating uncharted waters, we feel confident that our teachers, principals, custodians, school nutrition staff, and the rest of our MPS team will be able to succeed in taking on the challenges that lie ahead. We are truly, truly all in this together as we support each other and work tirelessly on behalf of our Norfolk students and families. Chairwoman Martin, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. So before we get to the presentations and discussion, I would like to ask for a, let's see, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Martin?
Yes.
I've spoken about the, if you and the board would consider for the July meeting minutes, if we could defer those until September so that we can get an opportunity to add some of the summary from the discussion of those meetings to the minutes. So I would ask if we would do that. Other than that, I'm comfortable. But I do think the minutes for July meetings do need a summary as part of the minutes.
I did talk to Ms. Tanner about that this afternoon. I'm sorry I didn't get back to you about that. And what she had done was she had, didn't feel comfortable with some of the, with recapping some of the meetings. I guess she just didn't want to misinterpret what was being, what was being said. And so she had included a link to, directly to the meeting so that people could go on there and see what was being discussed. So that is also on the minutes. So she just followed the strict Robert's rules of including one of the minutes, the decision-making that was, that was, that was included in the meeting. So that if anyone wanted any extra information, they could watch the video. Would that be sufficient for this meeting?
Well, I think for our record-keeping purposes, and we should have some summaries. I don't think it needs to be detailed, but if that's the approach that we're going to take, then I would just ask if we can vote on those separately then for the July minutes.
I agree. Is there a second on that? Ms. Basin? Any further discussion?
Dr. Martin?
Oh, wait. Yes, Mr.?
Okay. Yeah. I agree with what you said in regards to what the clerk is doing and recording. I just want to remind individuals that minutes are the official action of a meeting and not the discussion that is entailed in there. And so by adding, we're in a different age in the respect that we're able to record, and we record every one of our meetings. By adding such a link then provides context to anybody who would want to see that. So I don't see the need, and it would be out of order to begin to start transcribing what people say. It's only discussion related to a particular action. And so if there was action that was related to, then that will be what we place in there. So, you know, Mr. Jordan's more than happy to ask for it to be taken out. I don't believe that it's necessary.
If I may, just for clarification, I'm not asking for a transcription. Part of the responsibility, as I understand it, under our responsibilities for the code is to try to have summaries of our meetings. So in the June meeting, we did that. All I was trying to encourage was that we have a summary of what was presented that included presentations by staff and so forth. If the board doesn't want to do that, that's fine. I would just ask if we can vote on this separately then.
Dr. Martin, if I may, the board does do that. The board keeps an accurate account of that. Board Docs is our official depository of every report, every presentation, and including these minutes that are added in there, which tells the action of the board, which is also officially recorded through video. So I'd just like to say I don't agree with that total context, but I don't want to send the wrong message to the community that we don't have an accurate account. We actually do in several locations. So that's all, Dr. Martin.
So this is a, what I'd ask Mr. Jordan, Mr. Jordan, if you wouldn't mind, if we can spend more time going over the, coming to an agreement on this for our net, for the upcoming meeting and that we go ahead and keep the, and vote as, vote on the approval of the minutes for June 17th, July 15th, and July 22nd for today. But moving forward, we can have a discussion with Ms. Tanner together and come to terms on that. Would that be acceptable?
I mean, that's fine.
So the motion would be removed. Go ahead, as planned. Any other discussion? Okay, please call to question, Ms. Tanner?
Basin?
Aye.
So did we, hold on a second. Did somebody put a motion out to accept the consent agenda as presented?
No, I'm sorry. You're right. I just skipped ahead. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as accepted?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Ms. Campson, you can give it to Ms. Campson for a second.
Did you say it, Ms. Campson?
Yes.
Okay, please call to question, Ms. Tanner.
Basin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. And so for the school reopening update, Dr. Poole, will you be beginning the presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Let me stop sharing. Hold on a second. Which one? I'm trying to get his presentation. Stop sharing. We are stopped. It's already opened there. Okay. It's not allowing it to come up. Put on the screen. It's frozen. Isn't it that one? It's just right here. It is right here. Hold on. Okay.
There we go.
Sorry about that. We had technical difficulties.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, and board members. This afternoon, I'm here with Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Gibson, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Fraley to share an overview of the Return to School Fall 2020 plans. During this presentation, we will share components of related academic affairs, instructional technology, school leadership, human resources, and operations. Following the presentation, there will be a time for questions and comments. This afternoon, I'll be sharing information on the instructional plan, our focus on students of equity and opportunity, professional development plan, as well as how we're collaborating with childcare providers within the city. The focal point for the instructional plan is ensuring the curriculum is being used to provide new learning for all students. Therefore, the curriculum instruction team has been working diligently to create enhanced pacing guides that link directly to needed resources and materials that can be used in a virtual setting. Items created and shared by Virtual Virginia are being utilized, as well as various learning objects and software currently embedded into our curriculum. Teachers will be using Zoom daily to interact with their students in whole groups, small group, and one-on-one sessions. We're currently working on ways to record the lessons and archive them for use at any time. A major component of the plan includes enhancements to our assessments embedded into the curriculum. These assessments will play a key part, not only as we start the year to see where students currently stand, but throughout the year to ensure we're catching students as soon as they may be falling behind. There will be an increased amount of accountability on using the data from teachers to building administrators to division-level leadership. Pre-assessments are being developed that include standards from the final quarter of last year, and skilled students should have to be successful in their current courses. Formative-type proficiency checks are being developed and embedded into the curriculum to ensure students are learning new material prior to any type of assessment being used. Over the summer, the curriculum instruction team has been ensuring students will have online access to all of the textbooks used in the division. Where possible, we're working to have students auto-rostered for easy logins to each product. Currently, we have online access to all textbooks except for secondary science. Since we're out of contract with a science textbook vendor, purchasing is working with the vendor to establish a one-year extension for online access. With daily interactions and lessons scheduled, grading procedures and percentages outlined in the handbook should not change. Guidance will be provided to teachers on how to categorize specific types of online activities and for what expectation should be on the number of assignments required. I would like to shift our focus to specific plans to meet the needs of our nationally-recognized groups of learners and our equity and opportunity students who may require additional assistance. Starting with our early learners, specifically students from pre-kindergarten through third grade, based on feedback from parents and teachers, the whole group daily lessons will be offered twice a day to accommodate parent schedules. During this 15-minute daily session with each group, there will be lessons on social-emotional learning and back-to-school routines. Two other 15-minute sessions will focus on literacy, read aloud, and math for pre-K, and other grades will have lessons on science and history as well. The English Curriculum and Instruction Team is creating a systematic phonics approach along with a student toolkit. English emergent reader resources will be a part of the enhanced pacing, and the systematic phonics curriculum is being created in a way that can be used with all varied grade levels for equity and opportunity students. The math team is working on similar activities and products. They're focusing on a modified graduate relief cycle and how to elicit student thinking through ongoing formative assessment practices. Teachers will then work with families to schedule regular and as-needed individual online sessions or phone calls to meet students' individual needs based on data from PALS and formative assessments. In addition, for pre-K, we're purchasing an add-on to our creative curriculum platform that will allow access to at-home learning activities for parents so they can complete assigned remote learning activities that support the unit of study. Focusing on our students with disabilities, there are four areas of additional focus. The professional development will include any teacher that has a student with a disability in their class. Teachers will be provided guidance and professional development around the roles of the effective use of various special education staff in a virtual learning environment. We will also be providing specific professional development opportunities around the co-teaching model in the virtual environment. Additionally, we will be equipping paraprofessionals with both the resources and skills to provide small group support. Within the daily schedules, times have been allotted for specific small group instruction. These will be times where additional instructions provided to our students with disabilities to ensure their learning new material being presented. The instruction will be differentiated based on focused concepts from data collected from pre-assessments and formative assessments. Our Special Education Department will begin providing professional development and workshops to parents in late August. Some examples of topics we're planning to support parents with the virtual learning environment include implementing your students' IP accommodations, strategies to support a virtual learning environment, strategies to support social-emotional skills, the ABCs of the IP, and understanding telepractice and supporting related services. In addition to those supports, online software is being used to purchase, sorry, being purchased to provide academic and social-emotional learning opportunities to students beyond the teacher-directed instruction. As we open virtually, we intend to provide speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy services to students via telepractice using Norfolk Public School staff. We are currently working on securing HIPAA compliance through Zoom to do so to meet the needs of our therapists' Board of Health licenses. It is important to note this practice will require parent consent, and then an adult with oversight be available during the therapy session to help facilitate it on the student's end. Additionally, available programs and resources to support students and parents at home to supplement telepractice are being researched. This includes materials, manipulatives, and resources to send home to support a virtual environment. To ensure we're able to assist in always possible, we have budgeted funds from the CARES Act, combined with local funds, to provide one-on-one or small group recovery instruction to students beyond regular school hours, both during the fall virtual school and moving forward after in-person instruction resumes. To ensure we're able to assist with all of our students, plans are being considered to use department teacher specialists to assist with providing additional one-on-one and small group coaching to parents and students in order to help ensure effectiveness of the virtual instruction and increase availability of these opportunities beyond our school-based staff. Communication will be key during these times. Therefore, the use of parent-student conferencing during virtual instruction and minimum expectations for checking in with parents and/or students as appropriate to monitor success and progress will be put into place. These meetings can occur during the instructional day and in small groups as appropriate, or be individual with a student and/or parent beyond the school day. For instance, the minimum expectation of a weekly student-parent conference will be in place for grades pre-K through 5, and a bi-weekly meeting will be in place for grades 6 through 12. The conferences are intended to ensure that parents and students are engaged and that we're able to troubleshoot issues and readjust supports proactively versus finding a student didn't participate or that the family is struggling with the virtual environment. To provide meaningful learning and support to our English-language learners, we started with virtual learning workshops over the summer. On four Fridays in July and continuing into August, sessions have been held at open Norfolk, include live, hands-on opportunities for parents to learn how to use Zoom, Google Suite. Include live, hands-on opportunities for parents to learn how to use Zoom, Google Suite, how to set up an email account, how to get online, and how to get their Norfolk Public Schools credentials to log on to Chromebooks. Chromebooks have also been on hand for parents to experience and try the apps at these sessions. There is also a lesson on parent-using ParentView. To continue with increased communication and collaboration with parents, teachers and the community, as well as to organize resources and information more clearly, the division website has separated ESL and foreign language. Since making this change, there has been an increase in the number of visitors to the site. We also reorganized the site so that instructional resources, COVID-19 and community resources, as well as technology resources are more clearly defined. Additionally, the EL team is collaborating with all of the content teams to ensure students are getting what they need. Software was purchased at the end of last year to assist with core teacher and English language learner teachers to student communication and collaboration. This will assist with goal-setting, monitoring progress and providing a bank of instructional resources for all subject areas which can be catered to meet the need of specific EL students. As we continue to reach out to the community, we will elicit familiar faces such as homeschool principals and teachers to assist with our English language learning community. As with other equity and opportunity groups, funds will be made available to provide additional assistance to students outside of the normal school hours. Beyond the nationally recognized groups, we are committed to reaching all of our equity and opportunity students. This will be done through ensuring we identify students early. From those who have been identified from the end of last year to those who may start the year further behind than their peers. In order to reach all of our students, we're redefining roles of all personnel who do not have students directly assigned to them for learning. Paraprofessionals, counselors, building-based specialists, school administrators, central office personnel and the like will assist teachers when students are not showing up or when their data indicates they're not understanding concepts being taught. As mentioned earlier, funds are being reserved to provide additional time for one-on-one and small group instruction beyond the school day to assist with students who are falling behind. Teachers and administrators will be using data from the pre-assessments and the formative assessments to catch our equity and opportunity students early and give them the needed assistance prior to any type of summative assessment. To make all of this a reality requires a great deal of professional development. Although some of this started in the spring during mandatory school closure, as you can see on this slide, new sessions started the first week of August. These learning opportunities for teachers and administrators focus on using Zoom and Canvas, creating online lessons that focus on student engagement, as well as needed information focused on health mitigation. As we enter the school year, there will be a continued focus on teaching online as well as adding culturally responsive practices to meet the needs of our diverse learners, especially design instructional practices to meet the needs of our students with disabilities and social emotional supports for all of our students. These sessions will be ongoing so teachers can access learning throughout the year. Sessions are open to teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, long-term substitutes as they're identified as well. Additionally, in collaboration with human resources and technology, we were able to get our new teachers' access to email much earlier so they're able to participate in these sessions. On the first day of these offerings, August 3rd, we had 375 teachers in attendance preparing for virtual learning openings. As of today, there have been 26 sessions and over 1,500 teachers and staff that have participated in at least one of the sessions. The final piece within the academic affairs portion of this presentation is related to collaborating with childcare providers. Working with principals, school leadership and our preschool connections, we are building a network to work with any childcare provider in our great city. In short order, we will be surveying parents of early learners to compile a list of daycare providers. Some of this work has already began. In addition, members of our division will be collaborating with the Eastern Virginia Medical Schools minus nine-to-five organization to coordinate efforts between the division and childcare providers. Once the list is fully compiled, opportunities for professional development and collaboration will be created to better serve our students. We will work directly with childcare providers to understand the school day schedules and learning opportunities for students. In order to create more affordable opportunities for our families, we will partner with the Champions Program and other local providers to create full-day programs onsite at some of our schools. At this time, I'll be turning the presentation over to Dr. Cataldo.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. Today, for my portion of the presentation, I will be discussing areas under the heading of Instructional Technology. For our platform for instruction, we will be using Canvas, which is a learning management system that holds and delivers the NPS curriculum and pacing. Teachers and students will interface with the Canvas platform using Zoom to allow for synchronous and asynchronous instruction all being done online. Canvas also communicates with Synergy, which holds student grades, so ParentView will still be able to be accessed. This is for parents who want to keep track of student grades. Any courses that are not originally found in Virtual Virginia but are within our program of studies will be added to the Canvas platform by the curriculum instruction team along with teachers. Our student device distribution plan. Basically, principals currently are contacting parents and guardians to determine what their needs are for our families and for advertising when device distribution occurs for their particular school. We will follow the same district's drive-through distribution process at each of the schools like we did in April and May, where we distributed over 7,000 Chromebooks and almost 400 MiFi's. Distribution will be in vehicles, and we will also have a socially distant walk-up for parents, guardians with the need. This plan will allow families to remain in their cars or at a six-foot distance to receive Chromebooks and our MiFi hotspots. Parents and guardians that cannot make it to the school will be offered door-to-door distribution services using our buses. I mentioned in the last meeting that devices were collected from families that did not want a device over the summer, our fifth-grade students, our eighth-grade students and our graduating seniors. Since summer school is now over and August 28th, the deadline for incompletes is almost here, the principals have been given a list of all the devices that still need to be returned, and they are contacting families. And our principals are doing a fantastic job of reaching out to their families, and as mentioned before, will be utilizing staff to assist in the family and student engagement process, which is a vital part of the online environment. A big part of our device distribution plan was to allow choice for parents if they wanted to have their student work on a home desktop or a device. I am happy to report that when students begin reporting back to school for face-to-face blended instruction this school year, we will begin a true one-to-one computing system. Every NPS student will receive a device and, if needed, a hotspot. We want to make sure that the lessons learned during the force closure and over the summer in summer school and our preparations are going to benefit our students. We want instruction to prepare our students for their future, to be different from before. We want it engaging and multimedia-rich. This will take a one-to-one computing initiative, and we are ready to make this happen. Parents, guardians, student Canvas training modules and videos are currently being created, and they will be ready by late August. Access to these training will be found on the NPS Division website, as well as the Virtual Scholars Academy website. Training modules and videos will also be emailed to families so they can understand the platform and really see the ease of its use. Well, here you see our Virtual Scholars Academy webpage. You can see various links. There's information on what is the Virtual Scholars Program, the application to sign up, expectations, frequently asked questions, and also some sample schedules. The Virtual Scholars Academy was a year-long program, as you can see in the PowerPoint, but really, after feedback from parents, we listened to them, we have changed this to a semester-long program. So, the deadline to sign up for first semester is this Saturday, August 15th, and for second semester sign-ups, it will be in mid-January. Currently, we actually have over 5,000 students that have signed up for the Virtual Scholars Academy. That was as of about 30 minutes ago. There is really no difference between the Virtual Scholars Academy and this year's first quarter of school, where everyone will be virtual. There is no difference. The difference will come when the non-Virtual Scholar Academy students go back to face-to-face or blended instruction. The VSA, Virtual Scholar Academy, students will still be online and will have the same teacher and the same curriculum that they had during the first quarter of the school year. That's basically the Virtual Scholars Academy. Virtual Scholar Academy is considered a school within a school program, so students are still tied to their home school or if they're in a specialty program. Virtual Scholar Academy students will be provided with Norfolk Public School curriculum and pacing and will have the same daily schedules as non-Virtual Scholar Academy students. This schedule information will be provided during Dr. Gibson's part of today's or tonight's presentation. Instruction in the Virtual Scholars Academy will involve Zoom, which is synchronous, and also the Canvas learning modules, which is considered asynchronous learning. Virtual Scholar Academy instructors will all be from the home school or the specialty program your student would normally attend. Flexibility on a case-by-case basis will always be considered for any extenuating circumstances for folks that are currently in the Virtual Scholar Academy program or are not and maybe want to be. Students that need to disenroll mid-semester will follow the schedule change process and will work with the principal to have that request approved. Virtual Scholar Academy website will contain links and resources to documents for families for easy access, and students will continue to have the access to the same online resources that are found in their home schools or specialty programs. Examples would be like Smarty Ants, I Excel Reading, I Excel Math, Acelis, Legends of Learning, I Excel Science. Those are all programs that our schools offer, and they will continue to offer those for Virtual Scholar Academy students and for our students when they are online this first quarter. Technical support. The IT department has revamped the complete technical support process. The NPS Help Desk is an online technical support system for NPS students, for parents and guardians, for teachers, for staff and for administrators. It's really going to be for everybody. The technical support process is conducted through the following: a Help Desk call center, which we've had, also online chat, and because the computers are within our system, we'll be able to do a remote assistance as well, so logging on to the computers and working on them remotely. All devices are managed, maintained and supported remotely and centrally, and each student's device's internet traffic is filtered through a host web content filtering solution. At this time, I will be turning the presentation over to Dr. Gibson.
Thank you, Dr. Cataldo. Greetings, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, board members and Dr. Birdsong. I will be sharing a staff survey, the results from that survey, which was conducted in July along with daily schedules as we prepare for the year. In mid-July, the executive leadership team conducted a school reopening survey in order to receive insight from our teachers and school staff. The school reopening survey was opened from July 14th through 19th, and within that one-week period, between 85% and 98% of school teachers and school staff responded. In reviewing the data and numbers of staff and teachers who responded from the survey at each school, we were able to conclude that the survey results were representative of the division, and we have a very engaged and tremendously responsive staff and teachers. Survey participants were asked to share their comfort levels in regards to returning to school with an in-person, face-to-face model of instruction. 60% of staff indicated they were not comfortable with in-person, face-to-face instructional models. And as we looked at that 60%, we also noted that 23% of the respondents were neutral, and this is not a selection of comfort. Overall, only 17% of our teachers and staff felt comfortable with a face-to-face instructional model. With only 17% of staff feeling comfortable with a face-to-face return, it is evident that the board's decision to begin the year with an online learning model is a decision that aligns with making sure that our staff's and students' safety are priorities. As we prepare to open the school year, we want to ensure that our families and community understand that our school day will be a full day of learning with teachers and instructional support staff working their full days. The start and end times remain the traditional start and end times for each school on all levels. As teachers begin the school year with students in all grade levels, they will provide mandated COVID-19 mitigation training at the beginning of each class throughout the first week of school. For our youngest learners in our pre-K programs, we will have a daily routine where the teacher and paraprofessional will work with students on a virtual platform. Students will be divided into two groups, Group A and Group B, where each group will have enriching learning experiences. Learning activities will begin with a social-emotional learning activity that will lead into the literacy lesson of the day. Following the literacy lesson, students will enjoy music and movement activities, followed by a math lesson. Teachers will also provide a time for family-guided learning with one-on-one or small-group student meetings. Each day will conclude with family outreach, where the teacher will document progress and confer with parents via Zoom or telephone. We are also encouraging our families to enroll students in our Norfolk's pre-K program. We still have openings. Please share with friends, relatives and neighbors that Norfolk Public Schools is still enrolling pre-K students, and we would love to have your children enroll in and be a part of our pre-K programs. As our pre-K students and their families are blasting off in their virtual worlds, our elementary school teachers will be providing online instruction, which will include two hours of English Language Arts and one hour of mathematics. It will also include 30 minutes each of History and Science. Resource and elective teachers will provide class time as scheduled. Morning time will allow for tutoring and breakfast in the classroom. Social-emotional learning activities will begin each day with warm greetings and kindness. Additionally, our teachers will embed social-emotional support into academics as they build trusting relationships with students. In our middle schools for grades six through eight, we will have four 90-minute blocks of instruction. Students will have 85 minutes of class each day. In each middle school, students will have their middle school schedule of double-block math and English. This occurs in all the middle schools except Rosemont and ADL, which resemble the traditional eight blocks that are in high school. Each 90-minute block will require that the teacher be present and available to provide direct instruction and support during the entire scheduled class period. Please be aware that the last 30 to 40 minutes of the class periods will allow for asynchronous learning activities, where the students may leave the learning platform, but the teacher will remain to provide individual and small-group support. Just as teachers would spend 90 minutes each block in the traditional classroom setting, they will be required to be online for their scheduled classes. Teacher's schedules will also allow them a planning block each day, where they will be able to engage in individual and/or team subject area planning. Collaborative planning has always been a time in the school day that has allowed teachers to plan and to work with colleagues in order to pace the curriculum and to create common formative and summative assessments. Social-emotional learning supports will be embedded into the curriculum as well, and students will be able to participate in after-school clubs and organizations. In moving to our high school scheduling, students in grades nine through 12 will also have four 90-minute blocks that will be 85 minutes of classroom instruction each day. The teachers will also embed social-emotional learning supports into their teaching and interactions with students. Students will have their scheduled courses every day based on the eight blocks scheduled generated in the Synergy scheduling system. Each 90-minute block again will require the teacher to be present for the entire block. The last 30 to 40 minutes, the students again will be able to leave the platform. Students will be required, especially at the beginning of the year, to return to the platform. At the end of the lessons, the teacher can provide closure. Classes will be dismissed on the high school and middle school levels five minutes before the 90-minute time is over, so that students will have an opportunity to transition to their next Zoom session. For students who cannot attend school during the school day because of parents', guardians', work schedules or other extenuating circumstances, we will provide after-school lessons via Zoom and Canvas to support. Students will have their learning and their progress Students will have their learning and their progress monitored. They will still be enrolled in their regularly-scheduled classes and receive the content and curriculum for their designated grade levels. Attendance will be recorded daily. The state has allowed student attendance to be recorded as present through non-traditional means of contact and communication that can include, but is not limited to, submission of completed work, phone calls, home visits, individual virtual conferences, and email correspondence. Documenting attendance has to be purposeful, intentional, and meaningful. If students are working and completing their assignments and they are demonstrating adequate progress or above, our school staff is interacting with our students on a regular basis, then we will be able to mark our students present and accounted for. Home rooms will be established in schools so that contact can be made and maintained with students and documented on a regular basis. As we enter this new world of educating our students, it is very important that we keep connected and engaged relationships with them by making sure that our school staff can account for real interactions with every student on a regular basis. As summer comes to an end, all schools are planning to welcome back kindergarteners, sixth graders, and ninth graders, and welcome-to-school activities. Our sixth graders have participated in sixth-grade transition this week. Our elementary and high school principals are preparing and carrying out activities to orient our kindergarteners and ninth graders to elementary and high school. All schools are reaching out to families through a variety of media, which may include emails, phone calls, newsletters, surveys, and Zoom sessions. We are working to help parents prepare for the coming year. All schools will host device distribution times to ensure students have and are able to use needed technology before school starts. As we start the year, we will be one hundred percent online, and we will work through the first nine weeks. We will begin working to face-in, face-to-face learning as soon as local health metrics suggest our being able to do so is possible. While we are optimistic, we do realize that our virtual model of instruction may continue well into the school year, and we will be ready to work with our families to ensure a well, to ensure an enriching and quality education for all students. At this time, please welcome Mr. Dandrick Phillips, our Chief Human Resources Officer, who will continue our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. Good evening, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Jordan, board members, and Dr. Birdsong. Today, I will be sharing with you the Department of Human Resources Prevention and Response protocols. These protocols were developed collaboratively with Operations and School Health and Wellness. HR will disseminate this information to all staff members via the COVID-19 Guidance and Protocols for NPS Staff Document. In addition, we are prepared to manage COVID-19-related leave and employment matters as covered by the newly-created federal law, the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. As we know, prevention is key to managing the spread of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. Accordingly, HR's COVID-19 Guidance and Protocols for NPS Staff Document outlines specific prevention information, including, but not limited to, telework options, gathering size limits, face-covering parameters, social distancing guidelines, workspace health, visitor management, and the importance of self-monitoring COVID-19 symptoms. Staff will be strongly encouraged to use one of both of the free self-monitoring tools offered by the Virginia Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Prevention and Control before physically reporting to work. These checks should be conducted on any day an employee plans to physically report to work prior to departing from his or her home. We understand that prevention protocol must be accompanied by response protocol. Accordingly, we offer the following guidelines, all of which are explained in full in the aforementioned COVID-19 Guidance and Protocols for NPS Staff Document. Employees must self-monitor and self-report any COVID-19 symptoms, a positive COVID-19 test, and/or significant exposure to someone with COVID-19 in the past fourteen days. Specific guidelines and instructions will be provided for managing responses to suspected or confirmed COVID-19 exposure and/or infection. Reports will be managed via NPS's Potential COVID-19 Infection Form, telephonic interviews, and internal contact tracing. Response efforts will be coordinated with local health officials. No sick employee will be permitted to report to work during his or her fourteen-day quarantine period. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act requires certain employers to provide their employees with paid sick leave or expanded family and medical leave for specified reasons related to COVID-19. As of now, the provisions of this law will apply through December 31st, 2020. The two main components of the act are emergency paid sick leave and emergency family leave expansion. The emergency paid sick leave portion of the act affords employees two weeks of paid sick leave. This leave will not be deducted from employer accruals or paid leave. The emergency family medical leave expansion provides for up to twelve weeks of leave. The first two weeks are unpaid, but the next ten weeks are paid at two-thirds of the employee's regular rate of pay. Employees will be able to use their accrued leave to be paid the remaining one-third of their regular rate of pay. Employees will be required to complete the required forms to request this leave, and will provide the appropriate documentation to support their request. These forms will be posted to the Department of Human Resources website. Employees may request both emergency paid sick leave and emergency family medical leave. Mr. Fraley, our Chief Operations Officer, will now continue the presentation with information about facilities management and custodial services, school nutrition, and transportation.
Good evening, Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. This evening, I will present information for facilities management, custodial services, child nutrition, and transportation. I will begin with custodial services summer cleaning. Currently, deep cleaning processes are in place. Those include high-to-low cleaning, cleaning light fixtures, bulbs, lamps, replacing ceiling tiles, and cleaning vents and louvers, wiping down walls, furniture, and baseboards. Then they proceed to carpet cleaning, floor stripping, and waxing. All right. Custodial services cleaning for COVID-19 incidences. The following procedures for COVID-19 incidences will occur. The area supervisor for that school zone will assemble a team of NPS custodial building supervisors, including the site's custodial staff, as long as they have not been in contact with a positive case person. They will sanitize and disinfect the entire facility using the following equipment: a Mr. Fogger sprayer machine, which is handheld, and a Foamit electric mist unit, which is a pull-around unit. They will use Victory electrostatic sanitizers and disinfectant machines that are handheld. They will use Clorox Total 360 Systems, which were also electrostatic. They will fog, sanitize, and disinfect using the following products. These products are all EPA-approved. Brew Tab Disinfectant and Sanitizing Tablets, 256 Disinfectant Cleaner, Clorox 360 Disinfectant Cleaner, and the Clorox Surface Sanitizing Spray. Procedures we will utilize when the students and staff return to the building. Our procedures will have to be flexible to adapt and adjust to school schedules, program needs, movement, and our location of the occupants throughout the facility. We will perform a complete sanitizing and disinfecting process of each building at the end of each workday. This will be facilitated by the school custodial staff. School nutrition and food distribution sites. This is the current summer meal distribution plan. We have seventeen schools, three community centers, and three libraries that have been utilized this summer. These sites will continue through August 31st, when the summer school service program ends. Distribution sites during the first quarter of school. On September 8th, we will transition to the National School Breakfast, National School Lunch Program in twenty-five to thirty-five schools across the area of the city. The number of schools will be dependent upon available staff and meal program participation. Schools that are very close to each other or with low meal program participation will be combined. Meal service to the community sites and libraries will be discontinued per the normal practice. Breakfast, lunch, and a snack will be prepared in the cafeterias, available for pickup between the hours of three and five P.M. It is important to note that these hours will be flexible to meet the needs of our stakeholders. The meals can be picked up by the student or the parent and consumed whenever it is convenient for the family. Parents with students in multiple schools can pick up meals at the school of their choice, and as an example, if someone lives in Berkeley and they attend Lake Taylor High School, they can pick up their food at either Compostel Estem Academy or St. Helena. We have a return plan for blended schedule. Conversations have begun to prepare to transition to a blended schedule, and the information on this slide speaks to the areas which we will focus upon. Serving breakfast and lunch in the cafeterias, designated areas with social distancing, and take-home meals at the end of each day. However, the current emphasis remains on preparing for food service during the first nine weeks, meeting stakeholders' needs and having the supplies necessary to facilitate safe food preparation and food service deliveries at the end of each school day. Implementing signage, distant markers, and plexiglass barriers will be a priority to begin the school year. When we return to full-time student attendance, we are also in conversations focused on returning to a normal daily attendance, and this slide speaks to those that we will focus on. A return to normal menus and practices, adjusted scheduling, cafeterias that will serve breakfast and lunch, students will pick up their meals from the cafeteria, social distancing, plexiglass barriers, and social distancing practices. I'll end with transportation. In light of the school board's decision to reopen schools one hundred percent virtually, transportation is currently reviewing routing models and ridership numbers to meet the needs of the school system. Final decision for each of those will be made after the Virtual Scholars Academy enrollment numbers are shared. We are also reviewing ways our bus drivers can serve the needs of schools these first nine weeks. Current suggestions are to assign bus drivers to schools for the following supports: to transport school staff to engage learners, to deliver technology to students, to pick up and deliver parents to get to school meetings, assigned drivers to assist in other operation departments, to include the central kitchen, custodial services, and facilities warehouse. This concludes our presentation this evening. At this time, we'd be happy to receive questions from board members. Thank you.
I see your hand, Ms. Campson. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. First of all, very detailed, very, very detailed, very impressed with what you've done there. I do have a couple quick questions. The first one for Mr. Fraley, when we were talking about, oh, good, this is much better, they're not so teeny-tiny, when we're talking about the COVID-19 precautions. I think I lost it again. Anyway, when we're talking about the COVID-19, what I didn't hear is what happens if a child or, I guess that's not going to happen right away, but still going into place, or a staff member reports having symptoms? Will there be like a isolation room, someplace to immediately isolate that person, and what will happen with other people they're in contact with during the first nine weeks? The people that are working in the building, administrators, custodial staff, what happens there? In other words, what are the precautions for immediate isolation, and how far do they go?
There is, we have been asked to create an isolation room, and so that has been, you know, communicated, and when that occurs, the student will be evaluated, will make parent contact if there are deep concerns, so that the child can be picked up and transported home away from the building. Same precautions will go for staff members.
And how wide will the isolation spread? So, for example, we've already had some cases of this with a custodial, a custodial staff member, and later on with teachers and students in classrooms. Will we, is there, are you still working on, or is there going to be procedures in place for how far out the quarantine will go? Like, will it be a classroom? Will it be the custodial staff at a particular school?
I can refer to what Dr. Gibson is doing now.
Dr. Birdsong, jump in.
Yeah, I was going to address that. So, Ms. Campson, we already have protocols in place to address that, because we're already experiencing some issues with cases. And so, I'm going to let Mr. Phillips and Dr. Gibson speak to that, because they work closely together. And Dr. Dennis Moore, although he's not with us on this particular call, he has been instrumental with the contact tracing and working with the Department of Health with notifying staff members and all of the individuals that need to know about that information, but there is an existing process in place right now that we follow, when we know that there's a positive case or if we have a person with symptoms. So, Dr. Gibson, you and Mr. Phillips can chime in if you want to give a little more detail about what those procedures are.
Right, and I don't have to have every single little tiny detail, just kind of a quick overview. I don't need to hear.
But what you need to know, Ms. Campson, is that we do have a protocol in place, but every situation has to be treated as an individual situation, because there, you know, one, you know, in one incident, you know, there may be several people that need to be contacted because they've been exposed. We have to treat it individually, but there is a standard protocol in place, and I do want Dr. Gibson and Mr. Phillips to provide just a little more detail.
Okay, thank you.
I'll share, Ms. Campson, what happens when the principal calls us, or the person who is working that building is the leader, calls, gives a call to the executive director, they put in a health incident report form that is just for COVID-19. We, in turn, have Dennis Moore contact the principal to get names and phone numbers, because we have to keep employees' identity confidential. We have been immediately closing the entire building, if it's a school building, so that we can have the building sanitized. We send the staff home. Dr. Dennis Moore works with those who have reported the exposure, anyone who has come into contact with them to determine the length or type of quarantine, if they're going to the doctor, if they've called in positive. Human Resources is also notified. We don't, we tell the staff that the building is closed, we tell them someone has reported a case. If it pertains to them in that they were in contact with someone making the report or being exposed to that person, they will receive additional follow-up from the contact tracers. If no one calls them, then that means that they were not exposed in that particular situation, as far as we can tell from our sign-in logs, because we're asking people to sign in and sign out. Once the building is closed, Mr. Fraley team goes in and they sanitize the building. He lets me know it's been cleaned. I contact the principal, and on the next business day so far, we have been able to give access and allow the principal to notify the staff that they can come back in. I'm going to stop there so that Mr. Dandrick can talk to you about the HR side.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gibson. And Dr. Gibson has pretty much outlined what happens. Once we are then notified in HR, we take over and we keep a record of the incident so that we will know where the incidents are occurring within our organization, and pretty much that's what all happens. And as part of my presentation, when I talk to you about the Families First Coronavirus Act, making sure that the individuals are making sure that the individuals are getting their appropriate pay as well as monitoring if they, how long they've been out and how long they actually need to be out. So, we had worked in conjunction with Dr. Gibson and Dr. Moore to make sure that those things are happening. And those protocols that she just cited will be part of the document that I referenced in the presentation of COVID nineteen guidance and protocols for N P S staff. All of that will be outlined, line by line, for the employees. And it's a lot of information. And so it can be a little bit confusing. That's why my team is prepared and ready. As Dr. Birdsong had said, each person's situation will be somewhat unique. So, we will have to handle each person on an individual case-by-case basis, but making sure that we're being fair and equitable in the operation of the new law as well as what the employees' rights and entitlements are.
Thank you very much. I think that that really makes me feel better looking at it, both from, through the eyes of our parents and through the eyes of our staff. That looks like you've done a lot of very thorough planning. And I appreciate that. Have one more question on the academics to, I guess, either Dr. Gibson or Dr. Paul. When I was looking at the schedule and I was looking at it when I was looking at the attachments earlier, to be clear, when we talk, I look at a lot of professional development happening, and that's great. And but most of it has to do with working the technology, all of which is important and how to use all those pieces. But what I, and I could have missed it, but what I did not see as much was extra training in lesson delivery in a virtual environment. So, the less, you know, we can plan everything, but in the end, it all comes to lesson delivery. When the, right there in the spot, the fifteen minutes or half an hour, whatever you have planned for lesson delivery, you know, looking at what is that looking like? I know there's not much research yet. Seen stuff coming out. So, how are you applying whatever information we've gotten so far from what happened across the nation and in the schools to adjust the delivery of a lesson? Is how that's being done differently?
Absolutely, Ms. Campson. You know, and I think maybe I didn't explain that thoroughly enough. So, the process we're going through is first to learn about tools. And then the next level is about how do we teach in this virtual atmosphere? How do we engage our students? And more importantly, I think, how do we give proper feedback for growth? Because, you know, as a former teacher, you know, walking around the classroom is a lot to be able to say, oh, you know, you didn't carry that, you know, that five over when you did this addition problem. So, those are the issues that we're really trying to work with teachers on is how do we give feedback as we're giving instruction? Which is why the half hour or so of direct instruction, that secondary schedule is important. But what's more important is how are we interacting during the rest of that period to work with students? So, there is professional development, and we're working on that. And like you said, there's not a lot of research that's been done in that area, but we're pooling research in, we're pooling best practices in, and we're working with teachers just to have conversations around that with our new teachers, our new hires, as well as our most veteran of teachers. So, that, rest assured, that is a part of our professional development plan as we go through August and then specifically into the year to do regular activities with the I T R Ts as well with the teaching staff at each school.
So, I guess what I also am thinking about are things like, and this was when I originally brought up my concern about our academically vulnerable groups, which, starting with the K three reading, and my concerns there with, so, within that, and I couldn't tell, will we be doing guided reading groups? Well, is there a time within that block of time where the teacher will actually be pulling in on the lesson on Zoom and actually delivering a guided reading? I know that all the research I'm saying is supposed to be in shorter, quicker blocks and then the stretch out that we've had lately. But is, are they getting, are they getting some training in how to do that so that every child in elementary school, especially the most vulnerable K to three children, will be receiving a direct, a teacher-directed guided reading lesson every single day?
Yeah, so, if you'll, if you recall in the elementary schedules and the pre-K schedule, the blocks of whole group instruction are capped at like fifteen minutes.
Right.
So, that the teacher has more time for small group and individual. And English, the language arts team, the curriculum team are really developing a new phonics system to be able to use more virtually so that they, the teacher has more active interaction. But daily, there will be language arts, and there will be reading lessons and phonics lessons built into the day with small group and individual lessons. That's why the whole group parts aren't huge chunks of the day. We don't want, we don't imagine a student, especially a young student, would sit in front of a computer for six hours straight while doing a whole group lesson.
They won't.
Correct. So, a fifteen, fifteen-minute lesson tied into, okay, this is your timeframe where you're going to meet with the teacher individually, or these three students are coming in to do a small group lesson. It'll just be like a rotational model in a classroom at that point. And that's also where we're really trying to tie in the use of paraprofessionals and others that don't have direct students assigned to them. So, our reading specialists and others will help with that too, to integrate into small group lessons with our highest-need classrooms.
So, they'll be working perhaps with our children who are the least proficient at grade-level performance in reading so that those children will get a briefer guided, and I do, because I'm seeing a big study out of Harvard where they're saying it's got to be small chunks for them to have their attention. But, so, they'll have a directed reading lesson with their teacher, and then they'll probably get a second to get more instruction in. If they are a struggling student that are not performing at grade-level proficiency, they'll get a second dose of what we call a double dose or a tier-two level. Okay.
Correct.
All right. That was my huge concern because we all know that K to three, that's where the reading happens. And that's what I am most concerned about without having in-person instruction for this first quarter is having, ensuring that the children are, that we're, as much as we've learned so far, and it looks like you're looking at some of the same research that I'm looking at, and ensure that they are getting direct instruction and reading and catching their attention with the small chunks. So, thank you very much. It looks like you're ahead of me with all that planning, and I really appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Clayton.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Quick things, yes, no, from any of the group that are there. I just want to make sure that I heard this right. And I want to go back to Mr. Fraley regarding meal distribution. I know the thirty-first, we're going to start with the sites that we have there. But just so the public understands, the meal distribution will be Monday through Friday. And are we continuing with the weekend meal distribution?
The weekend meal distribution? I do not believe so. I believe it's Monday through Friday at schools, at the twenty-five to thirty-five school sites that we will open when school starts over.
Remember, Mr. Clayton, we are transitioning from emergency summer feeding into the regular school lunch program and breakfast program.
Okay. But I know that some of our schools used to receive some type of backpack program. Will we continue with the food bank or something with that?
We still have schools that have partnerships with the food bank, and we would certainly continue to support that.
Okay, great. Thank you. My next item that I had there, and great, and I just should have started off this. I really appreciate the presentation. There was a lot of great information. I appreciate the time and effort in this. But I want to go back to special education. And just for some of our students who are really vulnerable in the respect of where virtual learning can really be a challenge, nonverbal, students who are particularly in our CSET program, what things are happening right now that we're collaborating with CSET to be able to, and if there's some additional planning or additional information that's going out to those parents with those students that are assigned there?
So, we have, we have a survey out right now with all of our special education, our students with disability parents. It will be completed by Friday to find out specific needs they have that they feel they'll have in the virtual environment. We have been working with our CSET partners to offer support there as well. We're really focusing on how we can do individualized instruction with our highest-of-need students when we move forward. Again, it's that they'll have that portion of whole group if they're in a content area court. But we're focusing on how we, how do we do really differentiated, individualized instruction for our students? So, we're even looking to pool our division-wide specialists to do one-on-one instruction with students of high need. We're looking at every single possibility to reach our students and to work with our parents. You'll notice in the presentation, Dr. Walter and her team are really focusing on parent professional development. They're really partner with them to give as much support as possible and to do everything we can to resume any service we can possibly do virtually, to do that virtually. And I'm hoping that answers your question, but we are partnering with everybody we can, including CSET, and trying to reach the needs of all of our students through the virtual atmosphere.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Paul. My next item there, and I'm just trying to move through these quickly here. Just want to make sure that there's clarity. I thank you, Dr. Bill, Mr. Billups, for bringing about the staff leave. I brought that question up last month, and I appreciate you addressing that today. Also, from my understanding, professional development will be offered to parents and students in regards to how to utilize the systems. Is that what I heard, Dr. Cataldo?
Yes, that is correct.
Device distribution. All students, and I just want to repeat this, all students will have the ability to have a device, Chromebook or some type of internet in preparing back to school, correct?
That is correct. And starting when we come back to school, we will have a computer for every single student.
Which is my next thing. So, we are moving as a division to a one-to-one ratio for all of our students. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is exactly right. Yes.
Thank you. And for those parents who cannot get to a school because of work, I also thought I heard in the presentation that the division is even going door-to-door. It may contact with the principal and make it known that they can't make it to the school, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. If someone, childcare providers, I do believe I heard this about that there's a coalition that you all are working together. If there is someone faith-based or another group who wants to be able to support the division in this collaboration, who do they need to contact?
Dr. Gibson.
Thank you. Dr. Gibson, don't beat me up because they're coming their way.
She has a smile on her face.
On my face. Dr. White and I will be glad to receive their name, number, and know how big their building is.
Great. So, I hope everyone who was watching and listening, we are welcoming that support and want you to definitely send that that way. The last thing I had down here, and I didn't hear it mentioned, the governor announced about COVID Wise, which is a new app that they're distributing throughout the state. Is there any preparation to kind of get that information out to our staff as well as to parents to take advantage of that?
No, not at this time. That is something that we still will continue to research, but not at this time.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand. So, COVID Wise is the app that you download. It's free. When you say utilize, I mean, because anyone can do that.
Yeah, what I'm saying is essentially, are we just communicating that it's available out there? I know that there have been a lot of different, I mean, the schools is probably, we're the second-largest employer in the division. But also, a lot of parents, are we just getting some type of message out there to support the governor? Throughout the state's efforts to try to get this tool with another, you know, in our arsenal to combat this COVID nineteen. So, if we're going to work towards something later, if we haven't done it now, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I'm just throwing it out there as a potential opportunity.
I think it's just saying to letting people know that COVID Wise is out and it's available. We're the first state in the country to provide this type of tracking. It's very simple. It's, you know, it's voluntary. And it doesn't track your information any more than what you want to put into it or any more than a regular cellphone does already, so.
So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Is that all for you?
It is. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Smith. And then Ms. Gabriel, Dr. Gabriel.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. There's a lot of information there. I'm going to start, I'm going to try to organize my questions. I have a lot of questions into the sections of the presentation. But I'm going to start with a couple general questions. And one of them may be really getting the board to set some expectations around this. But what I would, one of the things that I would like to see along with a presentation like this going forward is a detailed plan that really goes into depth into many of the areas that we talked about as it relates to the virtual learning environment, you know, the instructional plan as well as the health mitigation strategies. And I think it's extremely important to have those protocols clearly outlined because I know that that would increase the confidence of our parents, of our students, and of our staff when they can see exactly what will happen, you know, once there's a positive case, you know, not only what are the prevention strategies in place, but exactly what the process will be for when there is a case identified among students, when there's a case identified among staff, and what that process is going to be in terms of testing and tracing and all of that. I think it's really important to have a document that we can turn to. And so, one of the questions that I'm posing to my colleagues is to provide that direction to the administration to develop that plan. Because one of the things Norfolk Public Schools, I know sometimes we say there are protocols and guidelines for things when situations arise, but then we go to find them. You know, they're not as easily accessible to our families. And so, that's one thing that I do, I first, you know, I'll ask the question, is that plan in process? And if not, you know, I would like for us to encourage that.
Dr. Birdsong.
To be clear, Mrs. Bassin, yes. Our instructional plan will be posted so the public can see our plan. It will be posted on the school division's website. And our health mitigation plan, when finalized, will also be posted on the website. So, those things will certainly be posted on the website for the general public to review.
Okay. And in addition to that, I think it's important for the public to know exactly what the health metrics will be that will guide us into the different phases of going from virtual to some hybrid to, you know, I think that that is very important for the, for our families and community to know what those are. Secondly, in general, so I'm still my general question. So, we had a innovation reopening task force. Can you, can you, I don't think we've had an opportunity to really talk about that task force and how they've been used to inform this process. And, you know, specifically talking about family, family members on there, but also teachers to help guide, you know, the instructional plan development going forward. And so, I'd like to hear a little bit about that. And if there's a place where we can even see who the members are of this task force and how they're going to be used going forward.
Dr. Paul, you and Dr. Gibson can address that.
Yes, Dr. Birdsong, and I think Dr. Cataldo as well has really helped to lead some of that work. We have had a task force that has covered several areas. We've also recently met with the E A N and N F T leaders to gain support. And we can, we can definitely provide the information of who's been on those task forces and items that have been discussed in those that have helped lead the plan that we have. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask Dr. Gibson if she would talk about the forum she's getting ready to host as well over the next week.
On next week, we are going to have five different sessions. On Monday, we're going to have a session for teachers and a session for classified staff. It's going to be a ninety-minute session. They're going to receive their invites. We have asked each school to send representation of a parent, a teacher, a classified staff member, and if applicable, a student. So, we're going to host the teacher, parent, classified staff. And then for the students, we're going to do two sessions so that we could do the elementary students And then for the students, we're going to do two sessions so that we could do the elementary students and then do the secondary students separately. We, they're gonna run ninety minutes, where when I send out the instructions, each person will be asked to prepare a minute statement. That they can share as we listen, and then after they give their minute statement, as they're listening, they can put questions in the chat. Once everyone has had a chance to speak for the first fifty-five minutes, the next thirty-five minutes, we will feel questions that have been placed in the chat. We'll be able to hear their thoughts, we will record the session so that we can take what they share with us back to our committee and task force. Meetings and from there have insight from the people that who are working for us and the people for whom we are working. So that is our next step in terms of making sure we're hearing the voices that we need to hear.
Okay, thank you. And so now I'll move into some of the instructional plan questions, so I appreciate Mr. Clayton's questions around. Related to our students with disabilities. In addition to to those questions, I do have, I mean, I was heartened to hear that, you know, the teletherapy services are being examined to provide. For our students, but can you also talk about right now? What is, what is happening in terms of IAP reviews? Are we working with each family to? Either modify, revise, or set amendments to those IAPs to prepare them for the virtual learning environment? Can you describe a little more about what is happening there? I know there's a survey out to to assist us in in providing other supports, but can you talk specifically? About the the IAPs and how they're going to be supported in the virtual environment?
Sure, so we have already provided some professional development to our special education teachers as well as building administrators. So that we can schedule meetings, we are looking to. Looking to the accommodations as far as how we're looking at instructional time and minutes within the virtual world. As we come back and what kind of supports we can offer to make sure that we have, like I said before, the individualized instruction that needs to happen in our, with our students. Our teams have have started, I believe, contacting parents and families to bring up. To speed our our students who are our IAPs that are out of compliance right now as well, and we're doing this in tandem. With making sure accommodations are being met as we come back to school, starting with the highest of need students. To meet their accommodations, the the specifics I can get from Dr. Walcott to share with you on 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 some of those, but it's. It's more related to the the instructional time and then the individual instruction time. That we have and that we're going to make sure that we're providing for our students. As we're, as we're looking at reevaluating the IAPs that we have in place.
Okay, and is the one-to-one time that is referenced, is that, I'm assuming that's in the virtual space and not? In person, so what about the students that whose IAPs require some in-person service delivery?
So is, again, as soon as, as soon as we feel that we're able to bring students back to face-to-face, those will be our first students that we bring back. The students who have the highest requirements with some of the the telepractice and teletherapy that we'll be doing. We want to make sure students, parents have the correct materials, so that's something that we're going to make sure that they have the materials at home. To assist with that, but as soon as we can bring them back, that will be our first group of students that we can bring back face-to-face.
Okay, all right, thank you. In regards to the childcare providers, so what conversation, well, not just the childcare providers, but in general. What discussions is the school administration having with our city leaders? In terms of supporting those efforts, you know, to provide supports for our families? Have you, can you talk about that a little bit?
Mr. Fraley may have additional information, but I do know many of the community centers have been closed. And so we've, we have a gracious ask that they reconsider opening some of those centers. So that we can utilize those facilities for childcare, so that's, that's the biggest ask that we have of them now. And I think they're going to be amenable to that. I know Mr. Fraley has been in conversations with some of our city leaders around that that issue.
Okay, great. And next, so I know myself, and you know, we we've all received lots of emails. And calls from families to really understand the difference between the Virtual Scholars Academy. And the, what I've been calling the MPS virtual system. And so, and then, and then there's, you know, trying to understand Canvas and the role Virtual Virginia plays in all of this. And I know, Dr. Cataldo, you. Talked a lot about that in your, in your part of the presentation and I, and your video, the informational video that you and Mr. and Dr. Paul put together. But I think there, there are still some questions around both of those. Opportunities for our families, and so specifically. If I'm, if I'm understanding, if I understood what you said, so did I hear correctly that you have five thousand people enrolled in BSA right now?
Yes, that's correct, a little bit more than that, but yes, that is.
A little bit more, do you, do you by any chance have it at your fingertips, like the breakdown of elementary, middle, and high school, or?
Actually, element, if you go through, it's about nine to ten percent in almost every single level, except as we get to high school. We get to high school, ninth grade is about seven percent, tenth grade is like six percent, and it goes all the way to seniors is just one percent. So it was very consistent all the way through in the lower grades. I would say the middle schools do have the highest numbers, if I look, but we have some large middle schools as well.
Right.
Yeah, they have some of the larger numbers, two hundred plus or so would be in the program for some of these middle schools. Now, again, it's, this is all preliminary because we're not really ending the registration until Saturday, and I think a lot of parents were probably waiting. They they saw my video and are probably waiting for this board meeting to make some of the decisions, I've got a lot of emails and responded to a lot for that.
Right.
I'm on the video, I want to say, you know, Ellen, move over, Dr. Paul's gonna be, have a new show. We're a great team, so thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was gonna ask Mr. Dr. Cataldo, just to, you know, while he is speaking. To talk about all of the supports online and everything that has been done to promote the program, so parents will know. Where they can go to get information that they may be seeking.
Yes.
So Dr. Cataldo, you want to talk about that a bit?
Yes, definitely, and I think the best place to go is is our webpage. Going to, if you go to the division webpage, and then the big scrolling, as it starts scrolling, I think the second or third big scroll down, if you click on Read More. It takes you right to the website, you just click on that little diagram picture.
Right.
Once you're, you get a lot of really good information, the video is in there. And the expectations and a lot of the frequently asked questions, and you're right, a big question has been, what is the difference between the two? Really, first quarter, when everybody is online, there is literally no difference at all. The same schedule, the same curriculum, same everything. When we go back to school face-to-face, those students that are in Virtual Scholars Academy will just continue. In the black same online school that they were in first quarter with the same teacher and the same situation. So really, this is an option that parents have asked us for, how do we have an online option? Again, much of this was before the board made made a an excellent decision to have this first quarter be online, so parents were just, you know, very apprehensive and. Just the way things are going out in the in the nation and around the state, they want to have that option. And they can decide to opt in if they sign up before August fifteenth on Saturday. Then if once they're in the program, they would really have until the end of the semester, mid-January. To opt out or to opt in at that time, so parents that have not taken the option. And again, we're going to work with our parents, so if there's a situation where we go back to school, let's say. Second quarter or mid, middle of second quarter, and they're still not really comfortable with that. We will definitely work with them on a case-by-case, have them reach out to me. And we will work with getting them into a program that they feel comfortable with, because no one learns if they're scared. They're just, you know, so it's important that we have those options, so we've listened to the public, we've listened to, read a lot of emails. Responded to a lot, and we want to make this program the best program for them with the least amount of changes. Because it is a school within a school program, and I don't know any other divisions around here that are doing it like that. So I feel really good about how we are doing this in this area.
Okay, so, so. Couple of areas that that. I have questions around or concerns, you know, is the daily schedule. So, you know. From the elementary and middle school, well, actually, all of, you know, the the schedules. Don't, I know they're modeling the the regular school day, but they don't seem to be. Developmentally appropriate, and so I know that is something that, you know, not only I feel, but there are parents that are. Reaching out to us with that same sentiment, like how in the world is my first or second grader gonna sit in front of a computer? And I know you talked about that a little bit, but if you could talk a little bit about how you came to that. Develop that plan, were parents input, you know, from the task force, the reopening task force, were they? Did they help to craft those schedules? I mean, I know they're really modeled after the regular school day, but they just. They don't seem to align with what we understand are best practices around screen time. As well as sleep schedules, you know, and of course, I'm talking about the high schoolers in that regard, and I've had teens, you know, say to me, well, now I have to watch my younger siblings. How am I supposed to get them started on their Zoom when I'm in my Zoom? So there's that piece, and then there's also the food distribution sites, like how would a family then go? You know, take a break to go to pick up, you know, food if they need to pick up food? How are we going to make that accessible with this, with the daily schedules that we have in place?
The food distribution sites are set up to where they can pick up multiple meals, so if they show up at three o'clock. They can get their dinner service for that evening, they can get breakfast for the following morning, and they can get a midday snack. Which some would refer to as lunch, and then at three o'clock, when the regular virtual school day is completed. They can come back to the school and repeat that again, and they can do that Monday through Friday. So, you know, they'll have the meals in advance is the plan that we have in place.
Okay.
We also talked about flexible learning for students who have those types of circumstances. Once they, once the school year starts and they meet their teacher, they can let the teacher know, I have to get my younger brothers and sisters started, I'm gonna enter your class late. I'll probably have to stay, you know, when you go to your one-on-one and you you may have to go over some things with me. The teacher through communicating, because she doesn't see the child there, when she makes that contact, that should be established. But if the child is not coming in on time. The teacher should reach out to the family to make sure and find out why, so that they can make arrangements and know about the time when that student is going to show up. So students can enter the platforms late, they can also leave the platforms early. As long as they are having regular continuous contact with their teachers, they are going through the curriculum, they're showing progress. They're gonna be counted on, they're gonna be counted present, and they're going to get their grades. So teachers will be able to work with those situations that need flexibility.
Okay.
Yes.
And Mrs., and I was gonna add, Mrs. Bassin, I I know you recall this from the mandatory closure. We had tons of email about, you know, parents felt like their child's day or their children's day was not structured. And so they requested more structure for the school day, so their teenagers wouldn't be sleeping until one o'clock in the afternoon or two. That this would kind of force them to get up and have a daily routine, so we wanted to be able to provide that. But we do know and we do understand there are extenuating circumstances, and there are some families who, you know, that schedule won't work for. And that's why we are allowing that flexibility.
Okay, okay, and with the, with the understanding, we could have a large, large number of students. Who are going to be seeking that flexibility, maybe based on, you know, the parents' work schedules. Because, you know, some parents have said, well, can we have an afternoon session or an evening session? You know, how will that work, especially if a childcare provider can't be the one to really monitor? You know, the academic situation for that student.
We are also working, just to, to address some of that, we're also working with the ITRTs and training. Of the teachers to teach them how to record just their lesson, not the students in the background, not voices. But they can record their lesson, and then we're gonna have those lessons posted each day. And so when parents, if if they're in that extenuating circumstance that Dr. Gibson had mentioned. And they're, they want to help their child, but they don't get home from work till later, they'll be able to watch those videos. And be able to see where that learning piece, that that taught piece occurred in the classroom. And again, as Dr. Gibson said, as long as they're communicating with the teacher, on Canvas, we can monitor. How often the student and how long the student is accessing the system? So if we know they're doing their work and they're getting things accomplished, and they're using those videos, then that's the flexibility we're gonna give families.
Okay, all right, and then the technology distribution, so we're saying we're trying to move to a one-to-one system. So why not give, why not, why not make the default that every student and child, I mean, every student gets a. Chromebook and MiFi rather than having, you know, I feel like we're. Perhaps giving two different messages that, you know, on the one hand, it's needs-based, and on the other hand, it's we have a device for every single student. And so how do we make it so that every student and teacher, they're working off the same technology, and it's more of a, you can opt out of it versus. Trying to opt into it? Does that make sense? Yeah.
Perfectly, and that's what we're gonna be doing when students come back to school. The default will be to get the device from the division. And if they want to opt out, they can have a process to do that, but we do want everyone to have the same technology. Problem is, we don't, you know, the school is just starting very soon, and of course, supply chains have been down and. Shipments are waiting for to be, you know, they're quarantined themselves, and they're sitting on docks for weeks and weeks at a time. So we wanted to not promise anything before we were able to really, you know, have all the devices in our hands.
Right.
So we feel that when we come back to school, at the earliest would be November, that we would have devices. Red image and all set to hand out to all students within the division.
Okay, so, so the other, you know, concerning part is that. We are, right now, I know there are principals surveying their families about whether they need technology or, or, you know, what their needs are. And are we perhaps, I feel like, are we engaging in a system that we know? Maybe inequitable to start with, like, do we have all the contact information for every family, for instance? Are we really reaching every family to assess their technology needs right now? And if, if we don't have those devices in place by September eighth. Are we, can, you know, are we starting the school year with this inequity in place? Because we know that not all students are gonna have the technology we need, and how are we gonna address that?
Well, we will know when students are not engaged or not, not logging in those first days, we'll know if they have a device or not, and that's where we'll be using our. You know, additional personnel to be reaching out and really doing that family engagement piece, so we will know. We did not know before, because before it was a very, you know, it was just a real crisis situation that just came upon us. This we are prepared for, so we will know, we do have plenty of devices in the building. We just want to get, you know, the same ones and be very consistent with that when we do the one-to-one computing. Which won't be until, like I said, around November, so at the earliest. So yes, we, we, when we don't have parents or students engaged, we'll know that we need to reach out to them. It's like seeing an empty, an empty classroom, an empty seat, and we reach out to those families and saying, hey, first day of school. And we get them back into their school.
Okay.
Mrs. Bassin, I'm gonna, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Birdsong, and then I'm gonna go ahead and move to Ms. Smith. She's been waiting patiently, and then Dr. Gabriel, and then we'll come back for more questions, so Dr. Birdsong, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, Mrs. Bassin, okay, I lost my train of thought. About children and devices and things of that nature. So I I mentioned in my remarks that we definitely are going to have a higher level of accountability. For making sure we have contact with children and families. And I feel confident that the structure that Dr. Gibson is putting in place with the schools. To make sure individual teachers are documenting which children are engaged, who is not, and if they're not engaged. What strategies will be put in place to make sure some type of contact is made with with the child? And so I I feel confident, you know, certainly when we had the mandatory closure, you know, the level of accountability. Probably was not as strong as we would have liked it to have been, but now going into this situation, there will be consistency across all schools. And expectations will be the same, so I feel really good about that. And Dr. Gibson, if you need to add anything to that, feel free to do so. Keeping in mind that because the children won't be in the school buildings, we have administrators, assistant principals who will be able to assist with no-shows. And they're gonna need to call home, they're gonna need to call neighborhoods, and the administrators are aware of this, many of them did this during the spring, especially as we looked for some of our seniors. So we're going to be prepared on their first day to look at the children who have logged in and started the year and look at the no-shows. And look at the no-shows. And we have to work, just as we always have, to find our no-shows. Because our, our employment, our um, having staff, all those things tied into enrollment. So we're going to have to go find our children so that we can maintain our staff.
And the operations division is, is committed to providing transportation. To those staff members that need to get out to the, to the homes to knock on doors and check on engagement. Um, and there are multiple staff members in each school that can do that.
Great, that's great. Ms. Smith, go ahead with your question. Ms. Smith, here, I'm mute.
Thank you. Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Gibson, you've given me a good segue to my first two questions. Um, I wanted to know to what extent will we receive updates detailing us? On academic achievement um during the first quarter to include benchmarks and outcomes. Uh, that are going to be put in place.
And, and I know Dr. Poe will talk a little bit about our assessment schedule. Just because we're not having SOL tests does not mean that we won't be consistently assessing our students. And where they are and where they need to be. Um, Dr. Poe talked a little bit about that in his presentation about. What types of assessments that we would be administering and how we are going to monitor students' progress. So Dr. Poe, would you like to add some details to that?
Absolutely. So a- as I mentioned, we will, we have a full array of pre-assessments for each content area. Where we'll collect the data early on to know where our students are. And specifically work with teacher groups and administrators to make sure they're aware. Um, and then we have, we've built in um checkpoints through each unit of study, let's just say. Um, to make sure that, that there's formative assessment going on and that we know before we get to an endpoint. Where we want to do some kind of a summative assessment, that we would, we would have that. And, and we have the routine. You, you know, benchmark assessments and the, and the products that we've used in the past uh with, with pals and, and other, other programs to assess. Reading and math that are in place. Um, and, and I, you know, we can look at those and look at an assessment schedule. Um, to be able to report data out to the board um, based on those, if, if that's the desire of the board. But we do have assessments in place uh to monitor student growth for sure. And just like Dr. Birdsong said. E- even though accreditation is, is been waived for the 2021 school year, it, it, the. Any assessment we give at the end of the year is going to create a baseline for the next year. We want to make sure our students are growing. It, it's not an excuse to not advance our students at this point. So we're, we're pushing our local assessments um even harder.
And Dr. Poe, that's exactly where I'm coming from. Uh, regardless of what's happening with SOLs. We still want to ensure that our students are tracking and that we're preparing them for. The next level, wherever that may be, be it going to another um, school level. Or graduating from high school. And so I, I only think the only way we can. Uh, assess that is by measuring it against something.
That, that's right. Uh, SOLs are summative. And, and we have a, a variety of formative assessments that we will be utilizing throughout the year. And as, again, SOLs are not the end-all, be-all.
Okay, I just think it would be great, great for the board to um. Receive periodic, and I'm not advocating for monthly or every other month, but. Even if it's just a mid-year or quarterly type updates of where we are.
We agree with that.
I think that's absolutely a fair request, absolutely.
Okay, did you want to say something? Dr. Gibson?
No, um, Ms. Smith said it for me.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Ms. Smith. Um, so, oh, did you have another?
Yeah, I have two more. My next question, I can't remember if this is what was there, but I thought it was. That the virtual, virtual scholars program would be open to. Parents who generally would homeschool their students, I mean, their kids. Was that?
Absolutely. That is absolutely correct.
Okay, so my question with that is, um, to what extent are we seeing? Uh, students who were, who were generally homeschooled and not a part of our enrollment. Uh, participating or enrolling now into the virtual scholars program?
That's a very interesting question, because Dr. Cataldo and I, and I were discussing that. And so we're trying to find a way that we can identify like who the children are. That have enrolled in the VSA in terms of if they've been previously homeschooled or not. So we're going to need a little bit of time to look at that. But I, I, I just have a feeling, and I don't, it's not based on data, but just based on the number of families that we have. That are interested in the VSA, I imagine that we have a lot of homeschools, homeschooled families that are now. Um, wanting to um be a part of this program.
Yes.
So as you look into that data, can you include these um indicators or parameters as well? One, how does that, their enrollment count towards our enrollment? And with the virtual program that we're using for the first semester. How is enrollment again being included when we prepare our report? I believe it's the end of October, somewhere around that timeframe, or is it the end of September? That we prepare our, our report for enrollment that supports our uh cost per student or budget numbers.
That's on the thirty-first.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yes ma'am.
So, so, so how does um, you know, the homeschool students, the students who are in private. Enrolling in our scholars program, how does that count towards our overall enrollment? As well as with the virtual environment, how will, uh, again. The enrollment count? You follow what I'm saying? Because we're doing things differently now.
Right, right.
Before, when we did the um, learning in place, it was after that.
That's right. So, so now, uh-huh. I was gonna say. And, and, and that, even though we're learning, even though students are learning virtually. They are still being counted for school attendance. Now, the state has provided us with some flexibility. Around what student attendance looks like because of the pandemic. But certainly, we will get ADM for children that enroll in our schools. And I know um, Dr. Cataldo's team, um, Dennis Fuddy actually gathers that data for us on a regular basis. And, and provides it to the administration to look at. So we're happy to provide that to you. Yeah, and what that flexibility looks like is we need to know how it's going to impact us. Right. If anything, it's a good thing. We, we want more children. We, we want more families to enroll.
Well, we, we definitely, we definitely want more. I agree with that piece of the enrollment, and that, that's what I was envisioning. But then when you go back to our regular numbers and ensuring that people uh or the students sign in and. You know, with that attendance.
Absolutely.
What is the flexibility that we have and the potential impact?
That's a good question, and Dr. Gibson spoke to this a little bit. And again, the state is allowing more flexibility because students are not physically reporting to school. So uh, there's some leeway on what that might look like, whether it be attendance in a Zoom meeting, completion of an assignment. A telephone conference with a, a child and a parent. I mean, there is some flexibility with that. And so it will be critical for, for, not that it hasn't always been, but teachers will need to document. Um, how students are attending their classes on the, on a daily basis. Did I miss anything, Dr. Gibson? And, um, I'm, I'm, I wanted to add that. The students who are currently homeschooled, who decide they want to go to virtual school in Norfolk. They will have to enroll at their homeschool as students to be placed in those virtual schedules. So they will, they will become actively enrolled students in Norfolk Public Schools. They won't just do virtual and never enroll in the system. They're going to have to complete the enrollment process.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Because there's paperwork associated with all of that, homeschooling and, and enrollment into the school division.
Okay.
So we have records of that.
Okay, it'll just be good to know what type of leeway they're giving us when we uh develop our numbers. Um, you know, to submit to the state. So my last question has to do with um best practices. What does best practices tell us? In terms of the number of instructional hours, and I know pre-K is in a whole, whole different group. But what does it tell us in terms of instructional hours for pre-K? Um, you know, to prepare them for the next level. And whether or not the one-point-five direct instructional hours we have planned are sufficient for them.
So I think, sorry, I think the, the best practice on instructional hours. Um, it, you know, again, some of that is just coming out when we have to, we have to try to blend what's best practice. For how long you should have screen time plus instructional practice. So even though with the, like, the pre-K schedule, it looks like there's only an hour and fifteen minutes of instruction. That's a whole group instruction. So then you have to add to it your small group and your one-on-one instruction that teachers will be providing throughout the day as well. Um, as, as well as with our early grades of elementary. Um, so, you, you know, best practices is, is as much as, as much as we can get in for, for instructional. Small group and whole group instruction, which I think this schedule provides. Without overdoing, you know, having a student on a screen for six hours at a time. So trying to balance that asynchronous work. With the face-to-face instruction. And then the other key to that is, is something we talked about with the teacher feedback. So it's not just asynchronous works that it gets turned in and it's tech plus a completion grade. It's feedback on, on understanding that the student can display with some individual learning as well. Those are the, the, kind of the balance of best practice, so that we're not um, overdoing the screen time and we're not underdoing instructional time. So we're balancing that asynchronous, the whole group synchronous, the small group synchronous, and the feedback to the students that's meaningful.
Mm-hmm.
So, so my question, Dr. Poe, with the pre-K came from uh looking at the nine-fifteen to ten-forty-five time slot. That's family-guided and/or one-on-one teacher-student meeting. So I just wasn't certain um, how that would work in terms of. Especially like the family-guided, the one-on-one, because the teacher can't one-on-one with more than one. So just, I couldn't visualize what that would look like or what it would entail.
So, and I, I think that's something that will become flexible as we go into it. One of the discussions that we've had with the, with the teams and the schedules when we're talking about instruction. Is what it looks like September eighth will morph by October first to, to a better best practice and to continue growing the product. What we tried to come up with, with the schedule was something where we had opportunity. And I know this one says one-on-one, but that you could also have small group instruction during that time. We just want to ensure there's time where teachers are reaching out to the students and the parents and making sure that they're getting the additional instruction that they need. Um, because as we know, especially with our younger ones, like uh Ms. Campson said earlier. That literacy and learning to read is, is vital. So everything we can do to ensure some level of accountability is what we've really tried to do with the schedule. So that we have that, all of those pieces of the puzzle put together. Um, and, and again, you know. Watching what we can do to get our students back face-to-face is, is ultimately where we all want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and thank you for your patience, Dr. Gabriel. Please go ahead.
No problem. I have lots of patience. So, um, let me just start off with some acknowledgements. Um, I, I want to acknowledge Dr. Birdsong and her administrative team for doing just a fantastic job. For being responsive to all of the questions that have come in from the community. I want to acknowledge Ms. Tanner. Um, I, I mean, I'll open my email and I'll see twenty messages um that has come through. And she's making sure that the board members are receiving the emails from the community members. So thank you very much, Ms. Tanner, um, for giving, um, sharing the community questions with the board. And then we are then handing them off to Dr. Birdsong. That's, that's our, our, our practice that we do. Um, and thank you to all the community members who have emailed, um, very important questions, real questions. They've shared some personal experiences um, uh, and commentary with us. So that way, uh, we as a team uh can try to provide the best type of educational setting for the children. As we possibly can. This is obviously a very unpredictable and fluid situation. And you, you know, even in my own job, you know, one day we start off with one practice and then the next day it changes, and then the next day it changes. So I'm very used to being flexible, which leads me to my next acknowledgement, and that is to the teachers. Um, our teachers are having to do professional development. They're having to try to understand. Um, how to teach from home, how to um, use technology. And I, I, I know that there are some situations where the division is trying to provide the professional development. And I just want to say that when I hear this presentation that you all have done. I, I hear things on mental health, child nutrition, safety, health indices, um, med- mitigation strategies. I hear a whole lot of comprehension. I don't hear um, pushback. We can't do this, we can't do that, we don't want to do this. Um, and so I just want to acknowledge that, that I, I hear that you all are trying your best. And I thank you for that. And I want the public to know that the division is trying their best. There is no playbook here, folks. We are in a situation where none of us can predict what this virus is going to do. Um, we see what it's doing in other parts of the um, country where schools have opened up. We want to be able to bring every child back um safely, so that we can catch them up um, and, and, and get back on track. Um, and so um, I, I'm really thankful for what you all are doing as the experts in education. Um, so then a lot of my colleagues here have already asked questions about um, the Virtual Scholars Academy and, and screen time and whatnot. So I'm not going to go back and touch on those points. I have a uh suggestion for the board. Um, I really liked what I heard um from Dr. Cataldo about the one-to-one technology. I would suggest to the board that we make it a policy. A policy that we say that we want to be a division that is one-to-one, that provides internet connectivity. That um, you know, uh, would like to stand up um, a help center for technology. I'm not sure how that would look. Obviously, Dr. Birdsong and her expertise would, would, would help to do that. But I think that as a board, I'm reminded again, what can we do at the board level? If we say as a policy, we want to take that question out, as you know, Ms. Bassin had said, you know, why even give, you know, the option, let's just do it. Um, I, I think that as a board, we should do it. And um, and then that way, when, when the devices are here. You know, I understand Dr. Cataldo exactly what you're saying about things getting he- held up and whatnot. When they're here, I think that we can say as a division, um, you know, a policy is in place and this is what we're committed to. And it goes back to equity. It goes back to just taking that question out of the parental concern. Cause we don't know what every family is dealing with. And we just say, hey, listen, here's your Chromebook, here's your MiFi, it's already loaded up. The parental parameters are on there. Go for it. There's no questions asked. I mean, we do that in the emergency room. If I want a kid to make sure their wound care is good, I just give them the Band-Aids and the, you know, Vaseline and everything. And that way I know it's getting taken care of. No questions asked. So I would suggest um, that we do that. And I know that I saw on Board Docs that the Policy Committee is, is meeting. And I know it would take board consensus, because it would be considered a new policy. But I put that out to my colleagues to say, let's take some action here and let's, let's do something about this. So that, you know, five years down the road, when there's another board here, and hopefully never a situation like this again. We've already have something in place that shows that we're committed. Um, and then lastly, I, I do like what Ms. Smith and Ms. Campson had said about the academic achievement. And, and I, I kind of heard, I don't know, I was kind of channeling Ms. Campson for a second there, and I was thinking accountability plan. Um, and the check-ins that we had talked about, you know, pre-COVID, about the benchmarks. And, you know, SOLs aren't the be-all, end-all. And so I would say that as the board does um, talk about the accountability plan. Maybe that's the appropriate point to insert some of those um, check-ins about how students are doing. And I will, um, let me see here. Oh, I ha- I have a question. Um, some teachers had put forth um, a question about whether or not they can come into the building. To teach from their classroom. And I wasn't sure if that was something that the division was considering.
So we are currently in discussion about that. Um, I certainly don't want to make a commitment. Um, as you know, we've had positive cases in our school now. And you know that when people, when more people enter the building, we can expect a, a higher frequency perhaps of. And you know that when people, when more people enter the building, we can expect a, a higher frequency perhaps of cases. So we are considering that. If we're, if we're saying it's not safe for our children to come back in the building en masse, I'm not sure that we would say that for our staff. Certainly there are extenuating circumstances that we need to consider. But at this time, we're still in discussion about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. And, um, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I appreciate all that my colleagues have already said, and I'm gonna do my best not to repeat any of that. I really just want to try to touch on, um, a few clarifying questions and maybe then piggyback off of, uh, the recommendation that Dr. Gabriel just made. So just, just first for some clarity, for the, the, the childcare partnerships that were being mentioned earlier, are we saying that there are going to be, uh, childcare opportunities at school sites?
We, we are currently saying, we are certainly exploring some options, but there are some partners who want to set up shop in our schools and, you know, they're going to take on some liability for doing so. But we, again, we just want to be able to provide some supports for families. We know that is a need. And so we're trying our best to, um, you know, talk with our partners, see who's interested. Of course, we want to start with our existing internal partners to see if they're interested in, in, in setting up shop in, in our schools. But again, it won't be a Norfolk Public Schools program. It would still be a program run by the community, um, partner, but just taking place in our buildings.
I'm, I'm supportive of it. I just want to make clarity that that's what we're working towards, providing.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And then, um, Dr. Catal- oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Birdsong, and you can refer it to whomever you wish. But, uh, I had asked, uh, sometime before about, um, insurance on the devices that we are currently sharing. I've heard from parents and others that, um, during the shutdown, some parents were rejecting the devices because they were under the impression that there was some financial liability they were taking on. Can you provide some clarity as to is there any financial liability that families would take on as part of our device distribution, not the one-to-one, but the device distribution that we are doing now in, in August?
I, I, that's misinformation, um, Mr. Jordan, and I'm going to let Dr. Cataldo speak to that. Certainly if we have a situation where there is intentional destruction of our property, then certainly the parent will incur some liability. But for other instances, um, we may not be holding parents accountable. So I'm going to let Dr. Cataldo speak more to that. I know he's, um, on top of the insurance piece. You're on mute?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Um, yeah. So the insurance piece, uh, we have been looking at, uh, and the cost basically per unit of our devices that we're getting. It really is, is not, uh, the Chromebooks, we can get them for about 200, a little more than $200. And so what we want to do and what we've been doing is we've kind of looked at rep- the replacement costs, uh, past history of, uh, maybe lost or stolen devices and realize that it's, it's really, um, it, it's very much in benefit of families that, uh, we don't actually charge. Of course, if there's damage, we would. Uh, we were looking at insurance too. Insurance per unit is, uh, over $50. So it doesn't make sense to, to be able to follow that. So what we've been doing is, again, we've had very little, uh, issues with devices being broken. We've looked at our past history with devices because we've been having devices for a long time for students, uh, in the classroom. And, uh, we have been able to keep those costs very low, uh, with a large number of computers that we do order. So these companies are working with us. We actually have some agreements with, uh, uh, one's called, um, Care. It's a care program to the ESI system and they work with us. And, uh, anytime we have damage or anything like that, they'll work on that device, um, and be able to fix most of it. And, uh, so yes, we don't pass those costs off to our parents. Uh, we know there's a lot of normal wear and tear and we know the devices in general, um, sometimes do break down. Uh, and we were able to replace those and not at the cost to any parents.
Right. Well, ju- just in, in, for, in my language, it is, there's no financial barrier or liability barrier for a family not to accept a device.
You're exactly right. Yes. We want everyone to have a device and use one and, uh, that's just so important.
Okay. Then I, it's my, uh, I don't know if I'm pleading or, or, or what, but just, just want to share, I've been trying to email you all different, um, comments I've received from parents. I just want to kind of share some thoughts with you again. So one, just, just in language, um, so when parents call me and they ask me about asynchronous and synchronous, I just say recorded and live. So I, I think sometimes we can speak plainly, it would, it is, is helpful. I know it's helpful to me, uh, at times. The piece about the devices and the conversation around being able to track whether or not students are engaged once school starts. I, I'd, I'd like to implore us to figure out a way to kind of reverse that, that we don't wait to, to the greatest extent possible until school starts to find out whether or not a child doesn't have a device or if a parent doesn't have a device. And I tie it back to, um, you all were sharing earlier. For example, there are families right now who are replying to surveys dealing with the scholars program. So if there are families right now that are disconnected or disengaged, they may not, their voices may not be heard in some of the things that we're doing right now. And their ability to participate in surveys may not be there unless we also have some, you know, voice uh, opportunity for folks to do that. So I would, I would like to say to the extent that there's any way possible to have our device distribution done, um, prior to school starting and, and setting up any kind of testing. And I mean, testing in terms of having parents log on, students log on, staff log on in some way to give you as much heads up as you can even before school starts. If there's any way you can factor that in, uh, I would just encourage us to do that because my concern is there's a, I think there's an intersection, um, amongst the students that we saw, um, that had the incompletes. The communities that data tells us are stressed around, um, broadband access and digital literacy. Communities that are being disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. And, um, families that are, um, considered essential workers or out there working families. So I think if there's some way of trying to analyze and map that, that if we could be intentional about trying to serve that group, uh, however big that group is, um, might be better in terms of our efforts around, um, equity and access. And then the, the last thing I'll just mention, uh, similarly, I had asked that, uh, in our previous presentations around being able to communicate what the demands are on parents, uh, the learning coach, whatever language that we're using during this online environment. I'm, I'm thinking we're going to be in an online environment probably for a semester. So be, being able to, uh, really make it clear what the expectations are on parents and how we then can provide supportive systems, uh, for our working families and for parents and for families that may not have adults that are available during the times that we are saying the virtual learning will take place. I'd just like to see us to do some intentionality around trying to speak to those families in our FAQs, putting out scenario planning, but something where the, the families that I'm hearing from, when they go on the website or they get a phone call from a principal or a teacher, they can truly see their scenario in what we're describing and where they fit. Uh, cause right now I, I'm still nervous that we really, I think we're doing a great job, but I think we can do an even better job of really trying to speak to the needs of, uh, of, of working families and families that are in this group that I'm just going to call the, uh, disproportionate COVID-19 impacted families. To the extent that we can identify who they are and really speak to their needs in our communication and in our, uh, FAQs and so forth, I think it would really help to provide some additional ease. I mean, everybody is stressed, but at least some ease to the families that I, I know I'm hearing from, uh, all day, every day. And I just want to encourage us to, to make sure that we are speaking to, uh, to, to all families. I'm sorry.
We appreciate that feedback.
Yeah. Hey, one last question.
We definitely do.
Thank you. Uh, one last question on the teacher assignment. So at, at one time I thought the, uh, the Scholars Academy was, um, suggesting that they, that the, whenever, whenever we go back to some type of hybrid or in-person learning, that there was something around the teacher allocation where the Virtual Scholars Academy family may not have the same teacher. As, as I understand it now, we're saying that the Virtual Scholars Academy family will have the same teacher. Is that also the case then for the other 25,000 students that are in the, uh, I think Dr. Martin and I tease and call it the, the general population, uh, online learning program of North Public Schools?
Yes, that is correct. Uh, they will have the same teachers as they had that first quarter. So teachers that are in there, the classes that they have first quarter, they will continue to have as we continue the school year.
For, for all, all students?
Correct, for all students.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Jordan, I do want to add, this is just a small piece of the equity piece. I, I do believe that some of our schools have already started reaching out to parents about, um, picking up their devices now. For example, there was a, a, a family that called, um, um, from the Southside STEM Academy. And I know the principal has, um, made an announcement about when those parents can come out and, and, and start, um, collecting or, um, picking up those devices. So I know that's something that Dr. Gibson is, is working on, trying to make sure that prior to the start of school, that we can get some of these things in place. So kids aren't learning the first couple of weeks and getting adjustment to adjust it to the devices, but they're ready to go from day one.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I've seen some of the signs of the device distributions. I'm just encouraging to the extent that we can. That if we say by the end of August, we're going to make sure that every child has the device that they need to start September eighth learning. I think that just should be our goal.
Okay.
Okay, well. So thank you, everyone. I just want to, I think it's important, kind of echoing what Dr. Gabriel had said, that we take a moment and really, um, think about how, how much has changed in the past six months. I mean, from nothing. And now we, we, everybody here has contributed and especially Dr. Birdsong and, and her team. I, I'm just so impressed and so proud to be part of this group, um, you know, and how you guys are just, you know, all the details and you're just working out this plan for our community. Um, and I think it's important to note also that our, um, that, you know, that our schools are a microcosm of our community. And so we, you know, we've, we've, we've all been a part of this planning process. But we do rely on our community to make sure that they are staying safe, washing hands, physically distancing, wearing masks and all those things to keep these COVID cases down, you know, testing and tracing and, and all those things so that when we do, um, when conditions do improve and we do go into in-person, which I know that's the goal. Everyone wants to go back to, um, to normal and, uh, so that we can do that. But we are depending on the greater community and there's only so much we can do. The planning is just so impressive. Um, but now the implementation time is here and there's going to be a lot more to work out. And that's again, where the community support comes in. So I hope that everyone has taken a lot away from this conversation. Uh, but at this time, I'd like to move on to our, um, school crisis plan and safety, um, school safety inspection checklist.
So thank you, um, Madam Chair, um, for, um, introducing the next part of our agenda. Dr. Gibson and members of her team, to include Renee Parker and Mr. Anthony Walker, are prepared to, um, give you some information about our school level crisis plans that we review annually. And certainly the board has to certify them on an annual basis. And the school safety inspection checklist that, um, we are to, um, provide information to you so that you can certify every three years. So without further ado, uh, Dr. Gibson, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening again, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Board Members, and Dr. Birdsong. We will present the school's 2021 crisis plans and safety checklist for your approval and certification. Ms. Renee Parker, Senior Coordinator of Student Support Services, and Mr. Anthony Walker, Senior Coordinator of Safety and Security, will be participating this evening to answer questions during the question and discussion period. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, in order to be National Incident Management System compliant, each entity, each entity that receives federal funding must ensure that it has a crisis plan for each of its components. In this case, the components are the schools. The school board is tasked to conduct an annual review of the crisis plans to ensure each school has a realistic and rehearsed plan to implement should a crisis occur during school hours. The Virginia Department of Criminal Justice requires that all K through 12 schools conduct an annual school safety audit. This is, this part of the audit includes a school crisis plan. The board is, is to conduct an annual review of the plans to ensure each school is ready in case something should happen during the school day. The superintendent must certify the plans using the, using the DCJS website, acknowledging that the review was conducted. The certification requirements include the school board's review and approval before August 31st. After the board and the superintendent have certified their reports, a copy of the plans are sent to the City of Norfolk's Emergency Management Officials. This may include the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Norfolk Emergency Medical Services. The components of the crisis plan include a command post, crisis team members, evacuation sites, media staging, and other areas to ensure that children are safe as they leave their school buildings and evacuate to, um, during the crisis. Other components of the plan include buildings that are sometimes attached to the school and they're called joint occupancy user vehicles such the, um, buildings such as the YMCA or our community recreation centers. Every plan also includes a school floor plan so that emergency workers going into the building will know where to go or what to do in terms of finding people who may still be there or addressing an issue that is there. All components of the crisis plan were reviewed for accuracy by a team. The team noted corrections and worked to ensure that the plans were easy to understand and follow by anyone who would need to read them. In addition to the crisis plan, we're also submitting this evening the safety schools checklist inspection, um, sheets. These checklists are standardized instruments that are used to identify weaknesses and offer a foundation to build a safer learning environment in order to prevent crime in our schools. The checklist includes an examination of the interior and exterior of our school campuses. As we look at the exterior of our school campuses, the walkthrough inspection includes an examination of fences, gates, lighting, buildings and grounds, cameras for surveillance, as well as security alarm systems and landscaping invisibility. As we are also on the outside of our buildings, we have to take into consideration for the sake of our children and our community, traffic and parking lot safety. This may, um, include the design of the building, if it's on a street or if there are speed bumps in front of the school to ensure that cars slow down. A big part of our traffic and parking also includes arrival and dismissal of students along with the bus loading areas. A big part of our traffic and parking also includes arrival and dismissal of students along with the bus loading areas. Once we've done the outside of the building, we come into the inside of the building and we walk through to make sure everything inside the building is safe. The checklist requires us to examine lighting, regular lighting, as well as exit signs and emergency lightings. Uh we also look at restrooms, mobile classrooms, the halls, the gymnasium, the um the library, all aspects of the inside of the school. Areas that are frequented by students have to be safe, so we try to make sure that all of the safety measures are in compliance. All schools should have some form of working two-way communication, so we also check for that. And that may include intercom systems, telephones, um cell phones and two-way radios. As we conclude the inspection of our school's checklist, we move to our next steps. The last section of the document also requires us to provide information about crime, which includes assaults, vandalism and larcenies. This information is listed to help schools determine patterns of behavior that can be addressed in order to reduce crime on campuses. The safety inspection checklist submissions will be used to support schools in reducing hazards on our campuses that may lead to crimes or injuries. So building supervisors and administrators have received checklist feedback and they will be working on quick fixes within their facilities and making sure that repairs that are needed have work orders for them. Mr. Anthony Walker, the Senior Coordinator of Safety and Security, will establish a safety audit team to include various departments in the school system. He will also establish a safety audit committee that will include that will include representation from parents, teachers, law en- law enforcement, emergency medical services and local community service boards. Mr. Anthony Walker will also be working to establish these two entities to support our students' campuses as well as to reduce crime on our campuses. I thank you so much for your time this evening and your attention to taking uh and taking to review the crisis plans and the safety inspection checklist that you received last week. Following questions and or discussion, we ask that you approve the crisis plans and the checklist for certification by our superintendent, Dr. Birdsong. Questions, discussion. Thank you for listening.
Start with the question. Um, so we had formed a Safe Safe Schools Task Force and it was um made up of uh PTA representation, principal representation, uh facilities, um emergency management, sheriff's office, police department, um FBI. So we had, you know, very uh large list of stakeholders um in our emergency management community. And we are last, we are supposed to, the, sorry. So for every month for a year, this committee met and was very productive and looked at many aspects of um what happens in different uh crisis incidents. And um we were supposed to have the report um by May or June of last of this past year, but that was cut short. Um, and so I'm wondering, I guess I'd like to hear more about will those because you mentioned some of those groups, but how does the task force inform this? Is this a new task force? Are we pulling from the same community? I'm just trying to understand this.
Okay, it it sounds like you already have one of the components that are required in the next steps for the safety checklist in place and it needs to be reactivated. So I would be interested in having Mr. Walker um pick up as begin working with that entity that's already in place, finalizing what you all started last year to identify what we need to do this year and begin moving forward with that part of what needs to be done.
Mr. Walker was involved with it last year, so it it wasn't a new assignment.
Mr. Walker can further speak to that?
Yes, please.
I can, and good evening to all. Uh again, uh Ms. Martin, I think that uh what you bring up with our Safe School Task Force uh is the group that I am looking to bring back to look at that tier. Because if, as you can remember, we identified through our meetings, we identified with those persons who remain, those different organizations. We were able to create uh three subsections to report out. We we talked about incident response, we talked about infrastructure and integrity, and we talked about the root causes analysis for uh student and school personnel. Within those groups, you know, we were able to come up with a pretty robust uh start to this task. So to answer your question, yes, that is a group that I would be reaching out to because they also bring to us principals. Uh we had parent representation there as well. So I think that would be a great uh springboard for us to uh reactivate or at least have a review of the initial internal committee to look at what we come up from our internal committee around the IT section, around um security and around risk management, where we can provide a report to that group as a next tier to continue our efforts.
Yeah, because I I mean, that whole, the intention was to have these conversations, come up with a report on what the findings were we met in the, we met within the schools and um and make some recommendations on some changes. But really, it's the 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 vital piece to this is that we've already established these relationships. And um and there's a lot of discussion about how these relationships had deteriorated over time and some really good practices that were in place are still viable now. And um so instead of, you know, reinventing the wheel, wheel, I really think that this is, you know, we've already begun a lot of the work. And so um you'd really like to maybe talk more about this uh so that we can, I don't see any reason why, you know, we can't meet virtually or kind of do a wrap-up and then move forward with uh and, you know, a new or subgroups or however we, you know, you see best.
And we would really like that. We would really like to move forward with that and get some recommendations from this group. I know the group worked very hard last year. And so, you know, we we would certainly, the administration would certainly appreciate um a written report. And I don't, I don't know, I guess that will come from Mr. Walker's office related to the work was that was done and um recommendations moving forward. Is is that what?
Harold Lance was um was heading that up, so. Um but when, however you want to direct that, I don't know who has that information right now. Um, of course, that would be in your administration, so. But we would love to have that report. And and it was also um at our last meeting because we knew, you know, this pandemic was coming on um about proper hygiene and hygiene practices within our schools. This is a direct correlation to what we're going through right now. Um, Miss Vaseen and then Ms. Campson. Ms. Vaseen, did you have something to say?
Sorry, I was on mute. Thanks uh for that information. Um, I have some questions and um so the safety audit that was done to inform the current crisis plans are, was conducted earlier in the year, is that correct? Do I understand that correctly uh based on the timeline?
Part of the safety audit is the crisis plan. And yes, it is done as part of, and we combined it because every three years, the safety inspection is due. So this year is the third year, which made it an additional component.
Okay, and um to to Dr. Martin's point, I was going to ask about, you know, the Safe and Secure Schools Task Force and um what recommendations they had made, because I guess I was a little confused earlier in the year about whether some recommendations had already come forward and and if there were any to this. But um I'll I'll table that piece. Um, one, one question is directly related to um, you know, we had, it seems like ages ago now, but we had the incident at Maury High School um in December. And I know that may have raised questions around um the safety audit. Um, I'm wondering if there were any lessons learned from that, um and maybe perhaps other experiences in terms of um, you know, vulnerable areas in our school buildings and um how we are addressing uh those in these current crisis plans, I know. Um, or or if that has taken into account. I don't want you to, you know, reveal or share, share that, but you know, I guess I'm wondering how that situation has informed the pr- the current practice uh that we go through to develop these crisis plans.
Well, if I'm allowed, uh I would like to share with you that uh I met not only with you know, law enforcement, but I had separate meetings with the community leaders. There were parents and uh leaders within the Maury School Division that I met with probably at least three or four times. They were brought into our Safe School Task Force meeting to hear what we were doing uh to share with them some of the input that we had in that aspect. So as far as what we were doing with Maury, there were lessons learned, as you will find with any incident involving safety and security. But I will say that it became a collaborative effort with the community, uh our internal partners with the school division uh to address those concerns and even have uh students to talk about it. Because we talked about, you know, some of the fears and some of the concerns that even some of the students brought to our attention that we were able to address by having those types of meetings.
Um, if I may, one of the concerns with the crisis plan and these types of incidents is that the building administrators have to get used to utilizing and practicing these plans so that when incidents like that occur, everyone knows what place they need to be in in order to be of assistance. And I think that there were lessons learned, but I also think that it makes a more robust plan for this year in making sure that crisis team members that are on these plans, even though it's done in July, when they return, when they return to the buildings, they know what their roles are as crisis team members so that everything can be carried out by those um people or either those alternate people.
Okay, great. And and to that point, you know, one question that I know came up frequently um is the role or the training um and knowledge base of the substitute teacher who may be, you know, the one in the school building and what kind of information uh they have at their fingertips in situations. And so I wonder if um if you've addressed that issue as well.
Well, I would say we we have addressed it in the fact that we are, you know, conducting tabletops. One thing I can say about all the schools in the years I've been here, principals have been extremely capable in their command roles during these incidents. Maury, Granby and and different types of incidents, all of the principals have truly proven that they utilize the crisis plans and they exercise uh those areas where they have to take a lead and their staff are well-trained. So I I I've experienced some very uh positive uh responses to that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Okay, I guess I was already off mute. Um, back to the um Safe and Secure Task Force um that we were working on and 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 once again, as uh I'm the uh doc- doctor uh Martin said, we had everyone that had anything to do with emergency services, security, everything, sitting in this. They were, it was amazing how anxious they were to come in and help the schools. Uh for the present, what was supposed to happen for the reporting out to the board was we had been, as uh uh Mr. Walker said, divided into three subgroups as the year went on with the meetings. And 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 what the plan was is the subgroups were were working on their reports on each of their areas. And so they were, we, they were scheduled to come in in May, of course, and we know what happened there. They were busy doing, actually doing what they were trying to teach us to do. Um, and so, but the idea was not to just file a report, but to have a a leadership person from each of those um subgroups to come in and get, I think, you probably recall this. It's been a while, I know, uh to come in and actually report out to the group because a number of the of the members of the task force were interested in actually being there during the presentation. Uh so it was going to be an oral presentation, written, of course, so that it could be turned in with the list of recommendations so that the the board and the district could then take those recommendations and prioritize them because you can't just do everything immediately, but to prioritize and which ones could we afford right away or which ones needed to to get more funds in for. So that was kind of the direction we were headed in with the hope to to shut it down. It was never meant to be a forever um task force. It was meant to do the year study and then report out with the recommendations to the district so they could then move forward with them. As I recall, Dr. Martin, do you think that's pretty much where we were at that point?
Yes, I do. And I think with the recommendations, though, then we would be able to choose and prioritize how we implemented them and and then still call upon them. Because um anyone who's familiar with incident management, you don't want to be introducing yourself to each other um at the at the incident. You want to make sure that those relationships are built beforehand and that they, that everyone's familiar with the protocol and familiar with their schools. And that's when the the training and exercises coming, it comes in. And there are a ton of resources out there that we can draw from. And um and we have an amazing experts right here in our hometown that um they're eager, like um Ms. Campson said, are eager to help, eager to bring back, you know, best practices as well as um through the conversations, a lot of, you know, the new things that um that were revealed, so. So absolutely. Um, and so if uh if if there isn't any, are we done with discussion on this? Because I'd like to move along because we do need to vote on the plan. Any more discussion? Okay, can I get a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommended um school crisis plans and safety inspection documents. By Mr. Jordan. Okay, um, Ms. Tanner, please call the role.
You're muted.
You're muted, sorry. She was muted.
Her face was so cute.
Looper reel. Hi. Hampson?
I.
Lantern?
Hi.
Gabriel?
I.
Warden?
Hi.
Smith? I didn't hear you, Christine, I'm sorry.
I.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mark?
I. Thank you. The I's have it.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
I just wanted to double check because I was looking back at the agenda. It has vote required on the school reopening update. Do we need to vote on anything?
No.
That was revised.
Agenda because we do not need to vote on that. That was for.
Want to double check, thanks.
But we do need to mo- vote on the monthly financial report. So I would like to move on to that presentation.
Madam Chair, um our new Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Stephen Jenkins, is here with us this evening. And he will be reviewing our monthly financial statement. So without further ado, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, Madam Chair, uh Chair Vice Chairman Jordan and uh and members of of the school board. Um, today I was, I was going to review the financial report for uh the month of June and also July. Um, I have summarized these on the uh a small PowerPoint, uh but um they're also in your packet. Uh, you can see from their budget, uh their current budget is three hundred and forty point five million dollars. To date, we have recognized revenue of three hundred and thirty-three million uh point four five which is ninety-seven, almost ninety-eight percent of our budget. Uh compared to last year, the collection rate was actually ninety-seven point eight percent. So we are pretty much in line with where we were last year. In advance. And this this is what is, what you've seen is a highlights, which is a comparison of the current budget and a graphical um screen along with uh actual revenues and expenditures. And you can see here, our actual revenues are three hundred and twenty-one and a half million against a budget of three hundred and forty-four point five five million. So we've spent ninety-four point four percent of the budget amount. Um expended and encumbered uh comparisons from the previous year. In two thousand and nineteen, we had spent ninety-seven point one percent. In fiscal eighteen, we had spent ninety-six point three. Obviously, we've spent less this year. The closing of schools was a large factor um in in the um reduced spending. Next screen. Budget summaries are uh are actually on page four of your handout. Um, but this is a comparison of the uh budget to actual for both revenues and But this is a comparison of the, uh, budget to actual for both revenues and expenditures. You can see that there are total revenue, uh, actual revenue to date is $333.44 million. As I mentioned before, we have spent $321.57. So, um, we've actually taken in more revenue or recognized more revenue than we have spent in expenditures. There, this is a very preliminary statement. We have booked, uh, city revenue based on, uh, our budget. However, we do expect that city revenues will be down from, uh, from the budget projections. And, and since we share revenues with the city, we're expecting an adjustment of somewhere between $3 and $5 million. Uh, we have, I've spoken recently with the budget director with the city and we're hoping to have information, uh, later this month in late August. There are some accounts where we, uh, also received less than we had budgeted, um, mainly fees. Again, the short, uh, the close down of schools in March would be the ma- uh, the major factor. Some things have surprised us. The, uh, state sales taxes have remained unexpectedly strong. Folks are still buying things, uh, not necessarily in their local stores, but, uh, through Amazon and other online retailers. Uh, so, uh, the, um, the recent, uh, I guess it's been a year or two ago when the Supreme Court changed the, um, the rules so that everybody pays sales taxes. We are actually, um, able to collect, uh, a, a lot of our sales taxes. In fact, we've collected slightly more than we had budgeted for. Uh, as I said, spending has dropped, uh, dropped compared to the previous year and again largely because of the pandemic. Further information and more detail is, uh, certainly in your, in your budget packet or your, um, your, your board packets. Next screen. This is the, uh, Child Nutrition Annual Report. And again, this is preliminary as well. We, um, we will soon start the audit and the final reports will come out in late November or early December. Our revenue, um, is $14.7 million or $5.3 million below our budget. Again, the shutdown, um, has really, has, has really hurt, uh, the child nutrition program. A lot of the, a lot of their revenue, practically all their revenue is collected from the serving of meals uh, and that's been drastically reduced. Spending did not, uh, go down nearly as much. Uh, we spent $16.7 million of the $20 million budget. So there is a, a net operating loss of $2 million. Fortunately, uh, we had a very healthy, uh, fund balance in child nutrition services uh, and we have not completely depleted it. We, we, at the end of this year, we should have a fund balance of, um, around $7 to $8 million. So, um, that will, uh, unfortunately, we probably will need a fair amount of that in the coming year, uh, seeing as we have not yet, uh, opened up. Next screen. This is a, a summary of the budget transfers that exceeded $50,000. There were three, one for classroom libraries, uh, one for renewal of the synergy, like, um, migration services and then, uh, unexpected increase in unemployment taxes, uh, largely through, um, because of the, of the pandemic. Next screen. I'm, I'm showing you, um, this screen and the next one are, are reports that you've not been provided. They're not in your packet. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about possibly, um, I guess, um, shortening your reports or, or, uh, preparing them in a, in a way that was more summarized and I, and would hope more informative. You're currently receiving, uh, a report, uh, by expenditure type or object. It's about three pages long. Uh, and, uh, I, I thought it would be more informative if we could condense some of the information and, um, and present it in a manner that summarizes the individual spending category so you have a better picture of how we spend their money and, and where we are with their, um, with their current budget. Again, this is a summary of, of a, uh, approximately three-page report. Uh, and you can see major expense accounts. The next page provides really the same information and it's just not quite summarized as much. So you see a few more categories. There are other reports that, uh, we have that are very, uh, lengthy. Uh, and, and I would, I would like to, um, be able to, uh, present some alternative reports that I, again, think would be more informative to you. And not so much information, um, that it, that is, um, really, I guess, small accounts that, that, um, are not, not overly important, but are, would be summarized here. With that, um, I don't, uh, there was one more screen, Ms. Tanner. And this is a screen that, this is actually a graph I borrowed from someone else. It's actually a trans- uh, the local transit agency. We'd like to be able to present information that would, uh, provide, um, our spending ac- across multiple months and, and years. Uh, so we don't have that as yet, but, uh, just to kind of give you a preview of things that we would like to do so that, uh, the reports would be, uh, I guess, more friendly and hopefully more informative to you. Would that conclude my, my presentation?
Thank you, um, Mr. Jenkins. Um, they're definitely more colorful. I really, no, they're very, they're very nice and, um, very easy to read. So I appreciate that. Um, any questions? Dr. Burdson and then Ms. Smith?
I'll let the board members go first. Um, I, you know, at the, yes, I'll let the board members go first, please. Thank you.
So I have quite a few questions. So let's start with the previous fiscal year where we had, oh, and Dr. Burdson, they don't have to be answered today. So if we have to, um, if we have to present it at another date, that'll be just fine with me, but I just want to put them out there. So we had 1.4 million that was, um, excess fund balance for textbooks. Not sure where we are with the purchase of those textbooks. You know, the pandemic came along and all that other kind of stuff. So just wanted to know, one, where are we with that? And then, two, if we didn't purchase those textbooks, how does that, um, translate into this fiscal year's budget in terms of textbooks or the online access that we were talking about? I don't know how it works, so I'd like to, you know, understand what our plan is and how it works. So then there was also 4.4 million, um, that we asked the city, could we reappropriate? I think the textbooks were a part of that, but I just want to know where are we with, at spending those funds that we requested to reappropriate? Same with the 11.9 that we're estimating for this year. Even at the high end of 5 million, I think it was, um, reduction in revenue, that would bring us what? To like 6.9 give or take? And, um, fund balance that we would have to ask for reappropriation, correct? If, if I'm mixing it up, let me know, but the bottom line of it, I just want to understand and, you know, for us to know what our plans are in terms of, you know, requesting a reappropriation and the utilization of those, uh, funds going forward. Okay, so I have, I have one more about, um, what happens, and this is general, what happens when we overspend a grant award? How, how is that dealt with?
So, Mr. Jenkins, you, I'm, I'm happy to start and then you can help me fill in the gaps. Would that be okay?
That's fine, certainly.
Okay, so Ms., um, Ms. Smith, you know, we had a textbook adoption, um, last year. So we have moved forward with, with all of that. And, um, it's, it's my understanding that we were able to secure online materials, um, anyway, even though, you know, we didn't know at that time we, we would be experiencing a pandemic. So, um, we need to certainly, I can't reme- I think it was over and I don't want to be quoted on this, quoted, but it was, I believe it was over a little, a little bit over 1.5 million or something like that. Plus, we have, um, a science adoption that we're, we're looking, we're going to have to do that sooner or later. So those funds will be utilized. So those funds will be utilized, Ms. Smith. You also asked about, um, the, the fund balance from 1819. Um, we have not requested appropriate, reappropriation from the city at this time. I know Mr. Jenkins, you know, as a brand-new CFO, has come in and he's been very meticulous about looking through our financial records and things of that nature. And so when he's at a comfortable place and he feels like we are prepared to move forward to ask for that reappropriation, we will do so. And I, I anticipate that that will be within the next few months. And I'll, and I'll let Mr. Jenkins speak more to that. So as it relates to. I'm sorry. Ms. Smith?
Do we have a window of opportunity for questioning that? Is there a deadline that we have?
No, there's no, there's no real deadline, no.
Okay.
No, no ma'am. And, um, I hope I don't, um, misspeak about this. It's my understanding when we overspend on a grant that we have to find monies within our operating fund, our general fund to, to compensate for overspending.
Okay, and that's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right thought process.
Yeah, if, if I could just add a couple of points. Uh, the, the text, as Dr. Burdson says, we certainly completed the textbook adoption last year. The mo- the $1.4 million was transferred to a, a new textbook fund. Uh, those funds had not been spent. So, um, the money that we spent from, for the adoption was actually in the current budget. So there, that money is, uh, would carry over. It is, uh, in the textbook, um, in a, a new textbook fund. The balance of that appropriation, there were a couple of things it was being used for, I think, largely facilities. And I think the pandemic kind of slow, slowed things down, so that those funds are also available. I will say that, uh, both of them were tied into an, an annual appropriation. So while the funds are there, we will need to get, uh, an amendment to our appropriation to actually spend them. Uh, but the money, the money is available. And, and it would be similar to what we would need to, um, if we were to, um, avail ourselves of any of these surpluses, either from fiscal 19 or 20, we would need to go to council. And it would actually first come to you for your, uh, input and approval. And then we go, go to council. And, uh, Dr. Burdson is correct, absolutely correct. Uh, if we overspend a grant, we would have to address it internally.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, um, and the, in the, on the grant section, I'm, I'm on your, uh, fiscal year 2020, June, June month end, uh, report. At the bottom, there are, uh, various grants listed. Is there any reason why we don't or cannot have, um, the CARES Act, funds also as a part of this, this report?
Uh, Mr. Jordan, I think it will be in future, in future reports. I believe that the spending on that, uh, CARES grant is, is starting July 1st. I, I, if there was some spending, it was fairly small. Uh, and, and the fact that it's not in the grant report here would, uh, let me believe it's not there, but I can certainly verify and get back with you.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess that kind of ties back, just piggyback on a question that, uh, Ms. Smith mentioned earlier. So in the, when we were having budget discussions, I was asking questions or trying to get an understanding of, uh, what the city was providing us in terms of, um, gaps that we thought we may have encountered in the, uh, last year's, last fiscal year's budget, the one we just, that just ended June 30th. As we were dealing with the impact of the funding formula, which I think ties back to what you were referencing in terms of waiting to get from the city later on this month, what that, what that impact would be. So as I, as I understand the report, you're saying we have about this, uh, 11.9, 11.8 million, um, in carryover unspent funds. We're anticipating that the city is going to ask for, uh, some money back. Is that how that works in terms of, uh, that, that 11.8, 11.9 million, which then takes us down to the seven or eight million you were saying that we would, um, then be trying to use in the, in this current year's fiscal budget? Am I understanding and saying that correctly?
I, I think so, uh, sir. I, if, there will be a surplus, it does, or at least it very, appears very evident that there is a surplus. We received more revenue last year than we spent. Funds that are available or that, funds that weren't spent would go to the, um, generally would revert to the city. I believe it's been their position that they would make it available to us upon your request, our request. Uh, and it would have to go as a request to the, to supplement our appropriation. So we would, we would first have to close out the, the books and then ask for, um, for authority to spend, uh, a, an adjustment to our current budget.
Okay, so, so maybe Dr. Burdson at our, at an upcoming meeting, when you all have that information, we can go back and kind of get a re-explanation of, um, because I remember the, the city was giving the school division flexibility with the SWIFT funds that then we were then using to support certain needs. And then we were still trying to figure out this issue in terms of, um, uh, the excess funds. And then there was also the, the CARE Act funding. So maybe September might be a better timeframe, but I'm still just struggling trying to understand where we are and whether or not we have all the resources that we need, both in terms of our regular operations, never mind what we know we're going to have to do based upon all the discussion we had today in terms of PPE equipment and all these other things that we know that we're going to need in terms of, uh, supporting our school division, whether we're online or, or in-person. I just, at a high level, I just want to get an understanding. Do we have all the resources that we need or do we not have all the resources that we need?
At this time, and Mr. Jenkins and I have had this conversation. We, we are comfortable where we are at this point and we have already, um, utilized some of our stimulus funds, some of the CARES Act funding, to budget for PPE. So I know our operations side and also on Dr. Gibson's side, we, we have ordered, um, um, those materials. And so we have budgeted for that and, and we do believe we're in a good place.
Okay, so maybe in September.
We don't have any concerns at this time.
Okay, so maybe.
Mr. Jenkins, would that be an accurate assessment based on our ongoing conversations?
Yeah, yes, uh, uh, Dr. Burdson, that, that's accurate. Uh, I mean, there, we, we really don't know what the future holds. Um, it's going to depend a lot on how long this, this pandemic lasts and when we can start back. It's, it, there's, there's more we don't know than we do know, but it appears we are okay at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And, and let me clarify as it relates to operating expenses. We're not talking capital and all of that. We're just talking about operating expenses right now.
Right, and, and I guess I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, if, if, if we were operating in a full, um, in-person environment like we were 12 months ago, if we were required to do that tomorrow, would we be good? I'm not, I know that we have savings like showed up in transportation and so forth because of the environment that we're in. I'm just trying to make sure that we're going to be good moving forward. And then one, one other question for the, uh, I guess the deficit that showed up in the, um, child nutrition. Where, where do we stand with that today? I mean, that was where it was as of the close. Where, where do we stand with that today?
Well, we've had a surplus. Um, Mr. Jordan, I think Mr. Jenkins shared that with you, a surplus of approximately seven to eight million. So that two-million deficit, we, we certainly would, would take that from that and we're, we're still in the green. So we're still operating in, in a surplus mode. But again, because, uh, of COVID-19 and, you know, revenue, we can anticipate that we'll, we'll experience revenue declines. But again, because of the surplus, we, we feel like we're in an okay position right now.
And, and just, uh, one point of clarification, the seven, eight million was after, uh, considering the current, the, the current year deficit. The seven, eight million was after considering the current year deficit. So we started out with nearly ten million at the beginning of the year. So we certainly whittled away at it. But there is cushion in there for the coming year. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Jenkins? Okay, can I get a motion? Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Just one more comment. Mr. Jenkins made a request about... I know we're accustomed to the same format of the financial reports that you've seen for several years. And he did have a request to kind of streamline those reports. And he presented samples of what the document would look like. And so we would appreciate some guidance on that and some direction on that if we can proceed moving in this direction to provide you more streamlined reports that are more organized, more user-friendly. And so we would appreciate some feedback.
Is there any objection to streamlining the reports from here on out?
No objection to streamlining with the details on the side, maybe, until we get comfortable with the new format.
Could you repeat that, please?
Oh, I'm going to unmute.
No, you're not on mute. You're just crackling a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. I was saying the new format is great. We could definitely move in that direction with the details on the side for a little while as we transition fully to the summarized format.
Okay.
We could surely do that.
Good, thank you. And then Ms. Basin, you had a question.
Yeah. I support this format as well. I think it's great to streamline it. And I particularly like the graphs and the visuals. I think that's a good move. I had specific questions. You know, as I looked through the reports, you know, there are understandably, you know, areas where I know we've exceeded certain expenditures. But can you speak to the terminal leave amounts there? And what that is attributed to?
Certainly. And I don't recall exactly which program that's in. But the terminal leave...
Yeah.
May I get your pardon?
I said it's in a couple of different programs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are the payments that are made to employees that are either retiring or leaving. If they booked some vacation, they booked vacation that they've not used, they accrued vacation time that they've not used. Or if it's a retiree, they could have had a fair amount of sick leave that we pay off when they retire. So it's those payments. And they often, they're very hard to predict exactly where they will fall. So those are payments that we make as people are leaving.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can I get a motion to accept the monthly financial report?
I move that we accept the monthly financial report.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Gabriel seconded. All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Yes. Basin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Lantern?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Warden?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. So thank you for that. And before we go on to matters of the board, I do want to circle back to the suggestion that Dr. Gabriel made about moving toward a officially making the decision to move toward a one-to-one technology practice. So to really institutionalize the one-to-one. So I saw a lot of nods. Is there anyone that objects to drafting, directing Dr. Birdsong to draft a policy or do the research to see how we can really institutionalize the one-to-one technology? Any objection?
I don't have an objection. I think it's something that we need to do. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have several policies. We're trying to get up to date. So I think it's a good idea. But I wouldn't put it on the policy committee at this point. I would give Dr. Birdsong and her team some time to work on whatever it is they feel they need to do and so we can get it comprehensive.
Absolutely, I agree with that. I just want to, you know, right now, we're doing it. I think just making sure that as we move forward, once we go, you know, once we get through this pandemic, I'm just crossing my fingers we do. And so that we don't lose sight of this. And I think this is something that has been talked about for a few years and moving toward it. And this is a great opportunity that I wouldn't want to lose the momentum on this. And I think it's definitely serving our community very well. So that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, you know, we're doing it. So I don't think that we need to...
I definitely support one-to-one.
Madam Chair, as a member sitting on the policy committee along with Ms. Basin now, I think putting it in our parking lot and following within our board norms, having a collective that the board suggests we should approach this at a typical point. When the time is right throughout this school year, then we bring it back when we work with administration. But I agree. It's something that's...
Just want to make sure we're on the same page. And so if there's no objection, okay, we'll definitely...
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Clank.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to matters of the board. Open the floor. Go ahead, Ms. Hampson.
All right, just checking to make sure I wasn't reading out.
You're live.
I'd just like to bring the attention of the board back to the School Board Accountability Plan. I know with everything that was happening during the summer, when we needed to revisit it, it is a five-year plan. Year one did end, not the way we thought it would. But we still need to always, it's not a document we just put on a shelf. We go back into it and we look at what's been working and what hasn't. It's going to be more challenging this time. But what extra things do we need to do? It also forms the foundation for the strategic plan that I know that Dr. Birdsong will be working on because it tells us where the board is telling the superintendent we want to be and when. And do we need to make adjustments now to the things that are aligned with the SOL testing and the growth model that that now does? I mean, for example, when we talk about Dr. Gabriel's goal for universal distribution of Chromebooks and MiFi's is needed, that falls right into our accountability plan under Goal One, Priority Five, which talks about equity. Because that's what the universal distribution of the Chromebooks and the devices are. It's how we build equity into our schools so that everyone has what they need. And so I'd like to bring up the fact that it's time, past time for us to go into our accountability plan to look and see where we are with the goals. And most of the stuff in there can be measured without an SOL test. A lot of that is in Goal One, but not in Goal Two or Three. And some of the stuff in Goal One isn't. So I would like to strongly encourage that to go on the calendar. I notice we don't have our year calendar up yet for meetings and work sessions or retreats or whenever. But it's something that can't wait. It's something that I think is crucial. So not going to take a lot of time with it. But I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board and encourage when you do your planning that we look at that within the next month or so.
Thank you. And I don't want to leave without mentioning that this is our last time that we're scheduled to have this hybrid work session, business meeting. And I appreciate you all hanging out, you know, about an hour or so over the past seven o'clock. But I really think that this was important. It was worth doing. Again, this is, you know, two meetings in one. And so next month, we're moving to the work session will be on September sixteenth. And then the business meeting will be on September thirtieth. So I just wanted to mention to that. And so we will be, you know, breaking this up and having more discussion and presentation time allotted than we have over the past six months.
And that would give us a chance to get into something like the School Board's Accountability Plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other matters of the board? Ms. Basin?
Yeah, I have two matters that I want to raise. And it's tied to our earlier conversation. And as Dr. Martin and Mr. Jordan know, I've been advocating to have another meeting this month. I do feel like we have a lot going on in terms of preparing for the upcoming school year as well as keeping our eye on, you know, school reopening plans beyond the virtual opening. And so I think there's a lot that still needs to be addressed, including, as I mentioned earlier, receipt of a full plan, a detailed plan, as well as discussion around resources and funding needed to implement the mitigation strategies. I know we just touched on some of it as part of the financial reports. But I think to really have a high-level overview of what the budgetary and resource needs are, I think, is important. And so I would like to get the board's, get your feedback, the board's feedback on whether that is possible to do. And administrations, of course, their feedback as well. But I think I would like to see us have another meeting. It makes me uncomfortable to go a whole month without having updates where we have the opportunity to collaboratively provide input and feedback.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel?
I respectfully disagree with Ms. Basin. Our job as the board member is to give direction to the superintendent. We have clearly asked her to open up virtually. We have gone through a four-hour meeting right now, which has outlined mental health services, nutrition, daycare, identified needs. I don't need anything more as a board member to know that they have told us that they are working vigorously on trying to get the schools open. I think that what we need to do right now is take a step back. We need to let them operate the division. And then we need to, again, funnel the information that we receive from community members, all which is very good and very valuable, and we appreciate it. But I don't think that that takes another board meeting because, again, are we coming back to identify a policy? Are we coming back to approve a personnel item? Are we coming back to do an alteration of the budget? No. And if we're not doing those things, we don't need to be taking up their time.
I respectfully disagree with you. I think those are always in our review. Yeah, what?
Sorry.
Hello? Oh.
Can you hear me? It went dark.
Yeah.
Did we lose her? I'm here. Oh, yay. Sorry, my dog was... I had to take my dog out. I'm so sorry. And it's not professional, but I had to do it. So I didn't... Kidnapped by the aliens. What's aliens? No. By a spaceship or something.
So then when can we expect the plans that are being developed? I mean...
Dr. Birdsong, can you speak to that?
As I previously shared with the board, we have to submit our plan to the Virginia Department of Education fifteen business days prior to the first day of school. So we are on track to do that. And we certainly will share that plan with the board as we have discussed with you today, based on your directive that we implement online or virtual learning for the first nine weeks of school. So we can provide that to the board. And we will also be posting that for public review on our website. In addition to the instructional plan, the health mitigation plan will also be posted on the website for our stakeholders to review. During our last agenda planning session, the agreement was that the administration would be providing another written update to provide to the board just to give you a sense of what we're doing moving forward, kind of additional big-picture-type items. And we have been planning to do so. And so that is the direction that I've given the senior leadership team. And that's the direction that we've been moving for the past several days since the last agenda planning session.
Ms. Hampson?
Then it seems like the only thing we need is to just have a copy of the plans. Once they're ready to go, send to us so we can read them. I don't think the point now is for us to read those plans and then start picking them apart and redirecting her to make the change. We have a superintendent. We tell her what we need done. We need the plan. We told her we wanted to go virtual. We told her what things that we wanted done. And then the bits and pieces of how they're done, all those components, that's why we have her, is to put it together. She's the expert. We're not the expert on this. She's the expert. She's putting it together. All we need to do at this point is to look at it like everyone else. We've done what we're supposed to do as a board. We directed the superintendent to do these things. She's put them together. She's getting ready to submit them to the state. I'm not sure what would we be doing at the next meeting.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we pick apart the instructional plan. My point is that at some point, our goal is to return back to school in some phased-in mechanism. And the board must be kept apprised of what that plan is and to have discussions around what that is. I mean...
Well, if we're apprised of it, she sends us to us. If she sends it to us...
I'm not telling her what to...
Okay, I just want to reiterate that Dr. Birdsong has committed, we've agreed that she will give us a plan by the twenty-sixth, you know, an update on it. We are also going to get one on the sixteenth. And this is going to become a regular part of our meetings where we're getting continual updates. So this is not the last time that we're going to be hearing about how the plans are being implemented and, you know, what the bumps in the road are and how they're handling that. So I just want to be very clear on that. Ms. Basin?
Okay, and I had a second. I had a second item, which is that the General Assembly is going to be convening in a late session. And we've been asked to, if we have a position on, you know, one of the Virginia Legislative Black Caucus has put in part of their package to reduce SRO presence in schools and replacing them with mental health professionals. And so we have been asked by Evanda Strategies, you know, if we have a position on that and what that is so that they can be more informed to speak on our behalf during that session. So that was one of the topics that I had asked about several weeks ago about including in part of our meeting. So that's something that I want us to be sure that we're, you know, on top of. And also, it ties into the request that I had made later in the spring about a review of our SRO program as well. So I wanted to bring those back to the forefront.
Well, in our previous, with the original budget proposal that Dr. Birdsong put forward, there were SROs and mental health. And I'm really, every time I hear either or, it doesn't make sense to me because they serve completely different purposes. And I think we need both. So, I mean, I'm, you know, opening it up to anyone else who has a comment. We still aren't really, haven't been presented with any idea of how those changes are going to be implemented for this school year. I mean, obviously, we're not going to be in the classroom. But moving forward, I think that's a discussion that we need to go back to. But again, I don't know why one would... Again, they're not the same at all.
And I agree with that, exactly what Dr. Martin said. That's exactly where I am with it.
And I don't want to open up this to discussion. So number one, I'll say I'm going to defer to the superintendent's recommendation. And then number two, I'm going to say we need to stop taking on the responsibility of what the healthcare industry should be doing for our children. I do not have a problem with making sure that our children are receiving mental health services. I do not have a problem with making sure that they are identified. But the more and more that the education system encumbers these type of expenses, it is going to have to be a choice between, do we hire the mass specialist or do we hire the other individual? I don't think it's appropriate for us to have to make that decision. I think we have to build those partnerships up. So I'm going to leave it at that. And I'm going to say whatever the recommendation is from the administration regarding the SROs and the mental health people, I'll leave it to that. And then I'll wait for her recommendation before I put forward what... it to that, and then I'll wait for her recommendation before I put forward what um the the individuals with advantage strategies need to hear from us.
Well, and I want to speak to that as well, because last year, last school year, if not the in the fall at some point, there was a, we were making some um some, there were some conversations starting about um the CHKD mental health um practices and how how we can form, you know, they they're part of, they, how we can bring them in and um into our schools and help provide that service and, I mean, because they're already in our community and they're willing to do this, and, you know, they're they're set up to where they they don't deny any um any child. So I mean, it was just, there's a lot of bon benefits to allowing, you know, just building the relationship and then allowing them to do it what they are trained to do in our schools instead of us independently hiring um mental health professionals. But I I know I'm kind of getting the weeds on it, but on it, but I think there are other ways that we can handle this relationship and take care of the need as well, which is another discussion we can have. But I don't, I don't know that right now is the time for it.
Right, which is why I'm bringing it up as a topic for future discussion, because we we must have, clearly must have a discussion around it, because, yeah, there's.
Well, if I may, um, we we have to bring forth our legislative agenda anyway, working with the Vanna Strategies, so if it's not in this special session, which starts next Wednesday.
It is.
Um, I know that, I I I know that it's probably going to come up in there, but I'm just saying, as far as an official position, um, you know, we still have to develop our legislative agenda for the next session, which will start in January. Um, but I would also defer back to, you know, whatever the superintendent may have, but I think that we've already sent a message through our budget, um, and where we're putting our resources at, um, and which was a mixture. So I I don't want to come off Ms. Basin, but I do have uh two items, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, one of those was where are we with the calendar? Um, I know that we had it on the agenda last month, but are we going to populate the calendar for the remainder of the year? Are we good to go with that for like our meeting dates and everything?
For our meeting dates? Um, we're we're going back to the first and third Wednesday.
Is that in October? We're going to do that?
Or, um, trying to think. I think it is.
Right, because it's not going to fit in September, because you already just gave us the 16th and the 30th, which I, okay.
Right, because we don't want to, we have Labor Day and, yeah.
And we don't want to occupy the superintendent when she's trying to get school started.
Right, right, so so that's, um, so that's, it's normal, but um, but we can, we, I want to, I guess, uh, we'll look at the broader calendar, and I know we talked about it up up through this.
This point here.
Through November, I think. So we'll get that, we'll get that um on the board docs for you.
Great. Um, the other item I actually shared with the board earlier, um, I know that Ms. Jordan had some um some constructive feedback. Um, but for those who don't know, um, we actually lost a very dear member of the Norfolk Public Schools family, um, and who also served on the school board, Dr. Anna G. Dotson, um, who passed uh on Tuesday, August 4th. Um, I put together a resolution in honor of her, um, which has been a custom of this board, um, would be to bring the family in, um, and to maybe make an official presentation, but as you can see, we're virtually here. Um, so I'm kind of torn, because I would love to put this here, but I'd also like to be able to have family members who could potentially participate, maybe in this virtually um in the month of September. Um, so what I'd like to do, if there's no objection from the board, um, is to work with uh Dr. Birdsong and the clerk, um, to see if we can arrange this, Madam Chair, uh, for September, um, to see if we could have them come on in maybe the beginning part of our meeting, the official meeting, um, and to officially read and adopt the resolution um and to present that to them at that time.
I'm fine with that.
Anyone else? Good?
Yeah, that's great. That's wonderful. It's very well deserved. Okay, any other matters of the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Very eager for that one.
We all know that patience is not my main characteristic.
You've been very patient. I appreciate it. And the second?
Second.
Mr. Clayton seconded. Okay, um, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Lantern?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Well, you all have a great rest of your evening. Stay safe. I need to go make sure my dog didn't run away. Um, but again, I think this is a wonderful meeting, and I really appreciate um everyone's input and all the all that you've contributed, and go Team Norfolk Public Schools. So proud of you. All right, have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.